Good evening, Delaware County, Pennsylvania. It's here by call for the 16th, 2022. Would you please stand before the podium?
All right. The Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in individual with liberty and justice for all.
Go forward, Mr. Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are rolling, Captain.
President.
President Sharon, Councilor.
President.
Next person, Lorraine Johnson.
President.
Counselor Talia Jones-Boy.
President.
Counselor Paulette Brooks.
President.
Counselor Colleen.
President.
Counselor Toya Monro. Counselor Toya Monro, absent. Counselor Deanna Roke Cloud. Thank you. Our Solicitor, Representative Mark Munch.
President.
Thank you. Our Financial Director, Althea Nichols, absent. Our Tax Collector, Mr. Londer Hughes.
In the house.
Thank you. We are Engineers, Mr. Joe Cruz.
Citizens Forum Agenda Items Only. Comments limited to three minutes. Our first on the agenda for Citizens Forum is Feller Johnson.
Good evening, everyone. You may begin. I have a couple of things that I'm not quite sure about. This newsletter. Is that better? Okay. The newsletter that was distributed. It was poorly. It was poorly, poorly done. No respect to the community at all. Some people got two, such as myself. I got one of them a car and one thrown in my driveway. One, I think, is really illegal. And you guys should know that as counselors, to place anything in a mailbox or on a car. It's illegal. And I don't know why you guys did that. And for the cost that it costs the residents, over forty-five, forty-seven thousand dollars, and then you had to pay somebody to distribute them? Sure.
Forty-eight hundred.
Thank you. Thank you. I mean, that's totally, totally ridiculous. That's a bad quality of life. And what I'm going to show you guys is even worse quality of life. This is how you got us guys living. Yeah, I got made copies until my ink ran out. Okay, you do that. Thank you. Sorry, I was trying to ask some for the community. So you guys.
We got eyes. We got eyes.
But I want you guys to know that you got media. This street was like looks my spare mouth park.
Wait, what's the statement?
That's the code people's job to know when a weather. I know it's wet and I know it's yay. And those are things that I even took as I'm driving around. Code people are supposed to get out of their cars and walk around. I don't know who's over code, but I do know that they're not doing their job. I also know that everything on the back of this thing is a lie. Everything. Because you tell me when somebody actually reported on the floor as a counselor. Can somebody on the other floor tell me or the rest of these communities up here? What committee you lay us on to? Because those are the reports that you're supposed to give from the door. The most ridiculous thing of all is that you have committee meetings at the end of the month. So I guess you guys don't have anything to bring to because the meeting is over. The month is over. That's ridiculous. That's ridiculous. And I'm here to help anybody that needs help. Knock, knock, ring. I'm here. But actually, people that's on the floor is supposed to be helping you guys. But I'm here to help anyone. Everybody up here know my phone number. Everybody. You guys got to do that. That's ridiculous. That's what can you really.
Will you please give me an address, please?
No, I can't. That's code responsibility and whoever's older.
Excuse me, sir. Oh, I'm sorry. I'll go around.
Next, Mr. Michael Trent.
Good evening, everybody. Okay, just to follow up on one of the things to paraphrase. Who was responsible for distributing newsletters, especially on the weekend? Was anybody? You guys know who's responsible? I mean, you guys have the newsletter published. It took three weeks.
It's on the back. Somebody should raise their hand and say, "Me."
I mean, is nobody one except responsible? I guess not. Anyway, one new bit is seem like you're hiring somebody again and replacing somebody as webmaster with this pink social strategies. On your website before you look into their background, they look like they're more or less she-dit.
Yes.
Are they really qualified to be a webmaster? I mean, you need somebody to do a better job as our borough website because there's too much negativity that stays up there. Too many misinformation pieces that.
You don't listen to soundbites.
I mean, it's almost like you guys just want to ignore whatever core consulting puts up there on the website.
They direct.
I don't like stairs. Anyway.
You move toward directly to do it.
As counselors, hopefully, you've looked into that situation, well, actually two situations where we've had recent employees leave because of the way the borough manager is mistreated.
Yes.
Especially one that was a female, hadn't been here that long as a code enforcement. From what I understand, taken to a secluded area and asked if they wanted their job, you know.
Last day.
And had probation extended for up to sixty-eight.
Three days.
That's a lot because he's wrong.
Somebody's supposed to respond. He made a slip. That's all right. So, you know, I mean, it's just interesting the way that you allow a lot of the confidence from the borough manager. Again, still, you're always on top of everything else. And looking at the mayor before, it seems like it's disputing what's always been claimed that we're fully staffed with our police. And everybody else has been saying that we're understaffed with police department. So, I mean, what's the actual facts? What else is going to be silent? Well, at this point, it's like I can see there's not going to be much response. I'll just know you're doing wrong and a lot of things are wrong. But, you know.
Mr. Trent, your time is up.
Oh, we know how to say that. Time is up.
Liz, I think Novich.
After refusing to meet private with Sean Wartsho's family, after refusing to answer their questions at meetings, after refusing to allow the mayor to answer their questions, Sharon went out and explained everything in the street to the activists she invited. Sharon, you explained you knew the holding cells were hazardous for twenty years because someone else hung themselves. You explained council is in control of spending money and your responsibility is to vote to spend money to fix problems, yet in all your years on council, you haven't voted to upgrade the nineteen thirty-seven police facilities. Anyone who still wants answers after this could go to the Delco Resist Facebook page, watch our July twenty-seventh meeting starting at one hour and thirty-five minutes. But please remember that Sharon and Lorin have both explained multiple times at length that they are incapable of identifying police officers unless they can read the names on their name tag. They particularly can't identify anyone with a beer. So you do need to take it with a grain of salt when Sharon starts pointing at officers. Also know we do not have, as Sharon puts it, rogue officers. We keep records of all complaints. What we have here is a problem with a rogue council president and three rogue counselors who are supporting her agenda to dismantle and defund the police department without any public safety measures to take up the slack. Removing the leadership of the police department and refusing funds to improve safety makes Sean's death Sharon's responsibility. Now, back to the agenda. Why isn't we have a vote on the agenda to hire an event planner with no experience at web design to maintain our website and social media? Someone who uses a website design service for her own website? Posting borough events on social media is a task for the borough secretary. Isaac? Leona Roke Cloud was providing Zoom access to residents for free until you prohibited her from making meetings accessible to residents, Sharon. Last year, we had competent webmaster and the award-winning site she designed. You chose to fire an experienced professional who happens to be white and replace her with a series of inexperienced people who happen to be black and are charging twice as much. Likely, they are charging so much because they have to contract out the work they can't do. Young Stephen here videotaping for Gary Core is a case in point. No other area borough has a media specialist on payroll, one who gets paid forty-five hundred every month. He says, "No comment" to reporters. No other borough hires an event planner as an IT professional. Your talk of fiduciary responsibility is ludicrous. And speaking of events, when is the fundraiser for the Williams family going to be announced, Lorin? You must have it all ready to launch by now.
Mr. Mario Semino. Semino, sorry.
Mario Semino. Come here respectfully as a former colleague in local government. I was on council working for twelve years and I'm here on behalf of Delco Resist and some of the other young activist organizations, which I have been a supporter of for several years now. Unfortunately, there are Sharon Hill fighting for justice for fans of Hillary. And I just want to, you know, respectfully say, I understand politics. I understand it all too well. It's bringing me back all too much watching the back and forth. But when it comes to life and death and, you know, the well-being of constituents and especially our young people and our children, please, we've got to move past this. And I was very pleased to see that, to one extent at least, some entities of government, I believe it was in the mayor's report, are calling on the U.S. Department of Justice. And I think that is where the activist community would wholly agree with you. It's high time that there be oversight in Delaware County. And honestly, I know all of us come under undue pressure from powers that be when it comes to these kind of situations that I think we need the Civil Rights Division of the Department of Justice as an independent federal oversight and arbiter of these issues. And I encourage all of council to pursue that course. And I would expect the activist community will be supportive of bringing that neutral and, you know, that neutral oversight to this situation. So this kind of situation, the situation that happened in Sharon with Fanta and that could happen anywhere else, there for the grace of God, you know, in my town or anybody else's town, will never happen again. Thank you for your time.
Tom Hannah.
Good evening, everyone. As council members, you have a fiduciary responsibility to priority spend borough dollars. Public safety should be one of the highest priorities and yet we were watching through systematically funding the police. Five months ago, we were told that the police were understaffed by five police officers. Now it is no longer in your interest to admit that council is trying to change the narrative. Having defunded the police and refusing to spend on public safety, you are jeopardizing the safety and welfare of the residents of this community. Residents no longer feel safe. You need to listen to them. You have handcuffed the police. We need to provide the police with the tools, equipment, and staffing to allow them to protect the residents of this borough. As a fellow resident so eloquently said, "This building is thirty-seven years old. The facilities are antiquated and unsafe and we need to spend on that." It is disheartening to see a traffic light current yay. It is even more distressing to see abuse is fodder in a game of politics. At the last council meeting, a demand was made to the mayor to start an investigation. Yet a few moments later, council stated that an investigation was already occurring. A motion was made to require training for the police officers with full knowledge that the former police chief ensured no officer was allowed on the streets without the proper training. The former police chief also cared so deeply for public safety that three-quarters of the hours of the FOP question regarding part-time officers was for training. We need each council to be held accountable and fulfill their fiduciary responsibility to this community. The wasteful spending needs to stop. Why was twenty-five thousand dollar raise given to the borough manager? Why is the borough manager paid more than the finance director? Why did we spend ten thousand dollars on banners that are illegible and will be destroyed by the weather within six months? Why are we hiring firms with no prerequisite qualifications and paying inordinate amounts of money? Why was a private investigative firm hired to conduct a search for the new police chief? If you truly cared about this community, you would not politicize tragedy. When the family of Sean was invited to the meeting, no answers were given, yet later, the council president told the activists. Is the protocol now just to give information to activists first and then to the family and residents? We need each council to commit to doing what is proper for this borough and to make public safety a priority. The resident's safety and sustainability of the borough depend on it. You have clearly authorized foreign wasteful spending this year than the portion of the FOP settlement allocated to this year. If you cannot be fit physically responsible for this, you need to look at the resign your post. To my fellow residents, people of power often have their own agenda. We need to hold our elected officials accountable. We as taxpayers deserve to live in this community that is safe, and that includes having an adequate police force and giving them the tools, equipment, and facility to do their job.
Convincing.
Hello. I have a couple of questions that at first I was thinking of a couple of confused since these meetings get caught from. So first of all, I'm really glad to hear that Mayor Hopkins has committed to the Department of Justice and a couple of questions about that in a minute. I also wanted to thank Mr. Bob for accepting I already know about last week. But there's my best point.
Can you take your last?
I'm sorry. All right. Cool. So one thing that I just like wanted to ask and maybe work together on it if possible is the website doesn't really have adequate information, reference, no requests, and that's required. I just wanted to offer, in the way to undermine what's on your agenda for today, but I do digital encoding by trade in my day job. So like those are important things that have to be on the website. If you can't approve this soon, please let me know. If I'm able to volunteer to help you all, we have you to do that. But you do need to have that information clearly on the website. Secondly, going back to the Department of Justice piece of the mayor's report for today. Mayor Hopkins, could you just say a little bit more about who you reached out to at the Department of Justice and exactly what you said?
Well, you can't ask if you come to the floor.
Oh, I apologize.
He can speak to you after the meeting.
Okay. I would hope that sometime during the meeting, maybe during the mayor's report, he can speak on that. I'll just ask the rest of my questions then.
Yeah, I'll let you know the proper time.
Okay, you can speak. That's not true.
Okay, I don't want to run. I don't want to run.
I'm not going to buy the she-mu's. Not true.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no reason I can't.
So my hope is that you reached out to a person at the Department of Justice and not one of the felon forms. I've done that and I will continue to do that.
It is a person.
Awesome. And then I also really wanted to reiterate, I think, what we sort of tried to have in our conversation, but I know it was an intense conversation, could be expected. I really think that this particular case is an issue of civil rights that were violated. And I also believe that you should be asking them to start a patterns and practice investigation because this is not the only issue affecting the police department right now, as other volunteers have said. And I think that that is honestly the best way to put forward the borough because they can actually help you if there are problems within the police department to go accountable to standards that will actually keep everyone safe. That being said, I really hope that you will release whatever written communication you have with the Department of Justice, but I also look forward to you talking about it later in the meeting. And I just want to reiterate that we're really thankful that you did that. But until there actually is an investigation, we are going to keep coming to these meetings. And I appreciate your willingness to do that. Thank you.
Angela Lee.
Good evening, G. I want to talk about the webpage and several broken links that are still on there. It's fun about feedback survey for residents when they come up here, what our experiences are. So I clicked that tonight. Page cannot be found. Reporter concern in terms of meaningful and wanting. Page cannot be found. And the newsletter, because it's right on the webpage, I went on that and you can't do it. The last newsletter, which was a nice one, was winter twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two. Had information of.
Excuse me, Ms. Lee. Everyone is not paying attention.
Not paying attention? That's rude.
Well, this is.
Typical. But anyway.
Disrespectful.
Somebody just say shut up. The last, I didn't say shut up because, hey, I'm not having that. But anyway, the last newsletter on the webpage was from twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two and had information about codes, public works, updates. Now the website seems to be politicized, so you're going to put soundbites and things about other counselors. You can put things on it about yourself when you tell people to shut up and you call names. Because the thing that I want to mention, the police chief that we had was up on technology. And in Never Province, which is not that far from here, they have a device called a Bolerap. And that's what they use for de-escalating certain situations, so they don't have to use lethal methods. So someone that had mental illness or something like that, instead of what's happened in Philly where they sometimes become lethal, then we use this Bowler device. Now Chief Chodgy was all up on the latest technology. And I would like to know, would we be interested in having that type of device in Yale since we haven't had any lethal shootings? So I would like you to look into the Bowler device and get back to me on that. And this, and the newsletter. What is that device called again? It's called Bowler, B-O-L-A. And you shoot it at the person. It's like a Kevlar wrap and it can't move. So it's non-lethal. So I thought that would be something that we could look into, even though we're smaller than Never Province, that might be something we could get granted. In fact, Chief Sblane, who used to be here, is the one that got it out here. And finally, the newsletters, they're all up and down the street. And when the sweeper came today, I guess the material that they made up was a newspaper. They just stayed in the street like cement. So all up and down my block, it's like three or four newsletters. And coming here, down Yale, they have it in the streets. So my daughter wants you to know, her car is new. Don't put any newsletters on her windshield. She had two. She said, "Mom, I brought a new car." So please don't do that.
Maluna.
I waste my time. Thank you.
Ronald Green.
Justice. Good evening, everybody. I'm not much of a speaker, but I come up here today to find out why we don't have the police trove. I have talked with the sergeant. He has told me, Mr. Green, we only have one. Last Thursday and Friday, Mr. Green, we only have two. We're not safe here. Also, when the kids are getting out of school, they need to have the patrol. The other thing is, I want to go real quick so I don't take up your time. Bayonne Road going down to Fermore Street and onto Fermore. I have a slow sign there. They don't pay no attention. Once again, signs are good, but we need to see the officers out there. Until we see that, we will do what we want to do. But we need a sign on the left-hand side. When they turn the corner, they're making a right turn and they're looking left. I sit out on my porch. The other thing is, long lane coming onto Cypress Street, there's a sign, yield twenty-five mile. When they come around it, they're not looking. We need our officers out there. There have been accidents also. So those are my concerns as far as Yale. And the other thing I want to say, the school district, they are terrible. We pay our taxes to them and I've been fighting for a long time. People have called me many names. The officers know me because I'm a strong black man that's going to stand up. You need to do something with that school system. You need to talk to Dr. Eric B. Coe.
Why are you talking? Why is every.
Oh, I don't like that. That's all right. That's all right. Y'all heard what I said. Yeah. That's what I said. You heard what I said. You don't do that, you bitch.
Consideration for the council. Is there a second? Is there a second? But we'll be probably second. Are there any questions?
I have questions. I see that there was a check for any amount of four thousand eight hundred dollars to SPM one O A LLC. And then it was, it's listed on here twice. One has the credit and one has the debit. So all this happening, it says to replace check number eight seven four one with newsletters.
Also, excuse me, council. We have one other citizen wishing to speak that was Penny McDonald. My apologies, Miss McDonald.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to say that I received this newsletter and I thought it was excellent. It was very clear. I've been coming up here.
I'm struggling to spread news.
And sharing some of the various information. But it was quite clear. It was quite clear the information was inside. Now, I hear people complaining. The same person came up and said, "Why are you spending so much money on mail? Mail the newsletter out?" So now you have it delivered a different way. Now they're complaining about that. So there are some people that people just not going to be able to stand on that. The other thing too, is I hear people coming up here and they're talking about the borough manager receiving a high amount of dollars, but the previous president paid the borough manager much more than what this gentleman is receiving. Also, I think people are forgetting our hats. People are talking about all of this little issue. I have a talk. Do you think you're messing with my time? People are coming up here talking about mailings. They're talking about things that don't apply to our budget. And because of the former police chief, we now have to spend over three hundred thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars out of our general. Nobody talks about that. They want to talk about how much money is spent for flyers, but three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars is coming out of the budget. To me, that's worth speaking about. The other thing too, is that our former president stopped the solicitor from stopping the opening of that marijuana distributor. The community said that they didn't want to beg. And let me say this, I'm not an advocate. I'm a resident of this Yale, of this borough. And I resent the fact that someone says that I'm an advocate because I was out here supporting the family. I live here. I've been living here for over forty years and I have a right to stand with whoever.
And I have a right to stand with whoever I want to stand with, just like you. Just like you. But what I am saying is that when you come up here and you want to complain about the mailing and then they even want to complain because they don't mail it. I think some people here just don't have anything to do with their lives. They come up here with that nonsense. The $387,000 that could affect our taxes, to me, you're never here. You're never here for people talking about that. You're never here about that dispensary where people, the community, that came out on a regular basis. They said they did not want it. They said they didn't want it. But the mayor.
Right, always want.
The former, the former president, they stopped it. So therefore, what I'm, I'm up here to say. I'm looking at people who are doing things for the benefit of the borough.
Come on.
Not for themselves.
Come on.
When you come up here with nonsense stuff, it's just very disturbing. But guess what? You got that right. You got it right.
Come on now.
Say whatever you want to say.
Come on.
Think about it. $387,000 out of the budget that could affect our taxes opposed to the mailing of the Don't Go on Newsletter. Mailing. Thank you.
And I never stopped anything. That's not true. And I don't have any power on council. I didn't stop anything.
I'm here to speak last time. I'm listening to the community, but I would like to speak three minutes. Three minutes. My name is Maluma Tunica L. That's how you pronounce it.
Yes, sir.
I'm former military, just came out. I live across the street. Been here two and a half years. When I came here, we had a police chief that was making sure the community was safe. About 45 seconds to two minutes because I know, because I had a stalker that was vandalizing my home. As soon as I called, the officer with the beard, Officer McCullough, Officer Z, they came. I know their names. I had to speak to Detective E. I know their names. I have a relationship with him. But what I'm noticing now, since, I mean, everybody has an opinion, ma'am. But you've never been in a war zone. If you don't think your neighborhood, if you think your neighborhood is safe now without the police presence, you might go to Philly for a little while. When you have a police presence here, people from over in another county go like this. I don't want to thrive up there. They don't want to come up in here and stay.
Come on.
As a thief, make sure that our streets are safe. And what's happening now, I start seeing a lot of things creep up and my peace presence D is starting to activate. So as long as I'm feeling triggered, I know there's some violence in the neighborhood. Like a woman being attacked in front of the live. How about that? How about the little girl crying, running up the street? And nobody.
Talk about, talk about.
This is what we talking about, safety in our community, okay? So when you talk about they were spending this amount of money, it's no amount of money you can put on a local market. You need to figure that out. I don't like putting that mentality out. We need a police chief or somebody here that's going to do their job and is intelligent enough to protect us and make sure our streets are safe and monitor our children. That's all I have.
There's a motion.
No, it's not. I'm here to finish my question.
We are on questions, ma'am.
We are on questions. We are on questions. So the $4,800 check that was initially entered, I see that it was returned and it's being replaced. I don't understand why that's happening. That doesn't make sense to me and it raises a red flag. That's number one. Number two, I see here paying Core Consulting LLC $4,920 for website and video services. And we are all aware, Core Consulting is putting his own spin on videos that he decides to upload. And he's creating snippets of him. I'm glad he has a great interest in me, but I do not believe his interest should be shown on our governmental website. It has come to my attention that the president of this council advised that with her blessing and approval, that he is allowed to torment anyone who speaks against her on any governmental website.
And why?
It's in writing via, it was sent via email. I also have a response from our solicitor, Mr. Bob, advising that our governmental website should not be utilized in that manner because it's terrible. Although it may not be a crime, it is still inappropriate for our website to be used in that manner.
I have information that it may be a crime. You can't use this allows a red flag.
Mayor, you do not, you do not, Mayor. You do not because our website, everything, everything that, I'm not done. I don't know what this chit chat is about. But everything that helps this borough to move is paid by tax dollars. Our tax dollars should not be paying for someone's political agenda. And that's what is happening with our social media platforms. And Sheriff Council has given the authority for him to do so. And it's wrong. So we're paying $4,920 for trash services on our website. That's what we're doing. We're just throwing money away. Throwing it away. I noticed, again, Joel Avery, Public Relations. I know that is, I know that is, but again, but again, we are cutting a check for $4,500. We are in month, the eighth month of the year. Every month since January 2022, he has received $4,500. I also noticed, just for this month alone, our legal fees have totaled $16,107. Just for this month alone.
How much here today?
Just for this month alone.
Too much.
That's ridiculous. Because since we took all this in January of 2022. Not me, not some of the other counselors, but
Thank you, B.
people have been able to have, to date, three major lawsuits filed against us. And this month alone, $16,000. And we're talking about $380,000 for public safety. That's a problem. We're saying people are complaining about mailings and things like that. Those aren't complaints. Those are concerns. Because money adds up. We're wasting a lot of money and we're supposed, we're supposed to watch.
Counselor, Councilor, maybe you'll recognize.
Thank you. In regard to Joel Avery, once again, I, I believe, if he's going to receive $4,500 every month, we need to see some type of itemized bill or some. How about seeing him? Or, or see him because, you know, just billing us every month just because he is a public relation. What is he doing? Is he doing, is he consulting you on the website? Is he, like, we don't even know what this man is actually doing for $4,500 a month. So I don't know any vendor that can just perform services and don't, they don't submit any type of bill or, or something that shows the services that they rendered. We have no idea what this man is doing. I don't believe we should just be paying people just because in name they are a public relation. And they, and, and the problem with this is that he doesn't even represent all of council. He's only representing one or people, or really maybe even one person at this point. So he doesn't represent me. In regard to the webs, um, not the website, I'm sorry, in regard to the newsletter. Why aren't the all seven of us getting any kind of input into this newsletter? There are people in this community that ask you, you guys can't vote right now? We don't exist. Like, we don't have, and we're not asked to contribute anything. I'm like really tired of coming here every month and feel like I'm just taking up a seat when I'm not being included on this council. I'm a councilperson just like the rest of them. And I need to have an input in that newsletter. I need to be visible as much as the rest of them. So that's going to stop. Our tax pay, our tax money, also, all y'all talking about y'all residents, we're residents too. So our tax money pays what your tax money pays. So we need to be included. We're going to stop this, as council wrote out, this working in silos, pretending like it's just four people up here. There are seven councils on this council. And we need to be included in everything regarding this council. That is the newsletter, the website. We are not asked for any kind of input and that is going to stop. And if you want us to vote to approve this crap, it ain't happening.
Counselor Johnson, you have a question.
Thank you. On page five, Nicholas H. D. Alessandro Jr. Why, I don't understand why he's being paid $340 a month. Normally it's $170 and 10 cents. Unless this is for two people and it's not stipulating so. So I'm probably going to do that for those two minutes. Also.
I didn't hear the answer. I didn't hear the response.
On page five, for Medicaid, for the post-retirement benefits for Nicholas D. Alessandro Jr. Most people get paid $170 and 10 cents. He's being paid $340 and 20 cents. And I don't understand why. But President Council says I have to speak with Mr. Nicholas now. On page seven.
We don't need to approve this accounts payable list if you can't get the answer to my question.
I do.
Motion to table the accounts payable list. Motion to table. And if Mr. Nicholas can't make the counter meaning that we don't need to vote on their accounts payable list. That's the bottom line. I'm not voting on this. We don't even know why these people are getting paid what they're paying.
Also, on page seven, Horizon Technology. It says vehicle tracking services, $258,960. And I need to ask the mayor if some of our police vehicles have tracks. We are, what is tracking?
I don't know what that pertains to, but I don't believe that's police. We don't have.
I believe it's for the code vehicles.
Yeah, maybe it's not police. We don't want police to be tracked. They need to track people. We don't need to track our police. Otherwise, we won't need.
Counselor B, I believe you put a motion.
Yes, I did. I made a motion to table the accounts payable list.
We don't know why these expenses are being paid. We can't get anything referred to. Mr. Nicholas is not here.
I second.
Second. She second.
Are there any questions? It's been moved and properly second. Are there any questions?
I don't think we need to vote on all of those because of three, two or three items. I think we need. Those items can be held.
There's a motion on the floor.
There's a motion on the floor. Are there, anyone in favor of tableing the motion? Would you please indicate by raising your hand?
To table the motion, yes.
I am.
Those opposed, would you please raise your hand?
Surprise, surprise.
I made a motion to amend the original motion to exclude the payment of $4,920 to Core Consulting LLC based upon the fact that he is not performing his services that he was hired to perform. Also, exclude $4,500 to Joel Avery based upon the fact that we have yet to see any itemized billing from Mr. Avery. And more importantly, we have yet to even see how. So at this.
That's your motion?
At this time, yeah. A motion to amend to exclude those two items.
And we want.
It's been moved and properly second. Are there any other questions with regards to the motion to amend the motion with those particular stipulations? All in favor, would you indicate by raising your hand? Roclow. Those opposed, would you indicate by raising your hand?
So y'all see, y'all see it right here?
So we can allow vendors to be, to be right along and we still can.
The motion, the motion, excuse me, the motion, the motion to approve the accounts payable list. I'm asking for all that are in favor, would you indicate by raising your hand? Are there, are there, the motion properly second. The accounts payable list, would you indicate by, the approval by raising your hand? Those opposed, would you indicate?
I oppose. And Roclow. We really should be taking a roll call because the motion, the motion carries.
Under new business. Salvation. The consideration for cash balance report of July. It's been moved and properly second to approve the cash balance report for July 2022. It's on the floor. Are there any questions? Here and now, all in favor, would you indicate by raising your hand? Those opposed, would you indicate by raising your hand?
I oppose. The mo, the motion carries.
Under new business, consideration to Mr. Dawson, are we, are we, have we received any declarations since this meeting started with regards to the services for digital streaming services? I'm going to ask that this, that what I'd like to, what I'd like to entertain a motion until we are able to confirm further the communication. We are in the process of evaluating two other vendors that have submitted proposals to do the services for the media live streaming graphic design services website management. And so I would like to have a tentative approval for the proposal if the, if the vendor is still interested in providing these services to us. So on the contingency of whether this person still wants to offer the service, they were. I think there's been a mix of communication here. But if they're still interested, we will move forward. If not, we'll put out a request for proposal for other vendors that can provide this service to us. And I'd like to entertain a motion to that statement.
Clarification from the Secretary. Madam President would like to table a motion as it relates to the hiring of April LCC. And she's asking for a motion to table this particular motion.
Give me a second. Who said April? Is Hillary Johnson here?
Your first goal is what do you want to hire?
Point of clarification, please.
Yes.
The motion is, Madam President.
Yes.
The motion is to either rescind for, for Ms. Kelly or to table for the other young lady who wants to be our webmaster. I think her name is April.
Okay, April. So we need to rescind first and then. Okay. I wish the motions had been separate because that, that lends itself to the communication here.
My apologies, my apologies, Madam President.
Your apologies accepted. Thank you. So the consideration, so I will restate, I will restate the motion. I'd like consideration to rescind Kelly Johnson, who has submitted an application last month, as the new webmaster for to engage in services. We'd like to approve Pink Social Strategies to provide digital, to, to provide digital communication.
Madam Secretary, Madam President, can you make the motion, please, to rescind the hiring of Ms. Kelly Johnson?
Let's separate.
Separate them and ask for a motion, then ask to be seconded and then ask for a vote. And secondly, you can then ask for the table of the second person for the webmaster.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and properly seconded to separate these two motions on the floor.
Can you state it on the floor as a separation?
The, the Kelly Johnson.
Can't be a so-called, it has to be separated by a motion. A motion made by the council. You just can't do it that way.
So the motion's on the floor. All in favor of separating the Kelly Johnson.
You don't even know what you're saying. You got to know too.
Would you indicate, can I have a second, please? A second to rescind the motion for Kelly Johnson. Is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded to rescind the hiring of Kelly Johnson as the new webmaster.
I make a motion to table all of this because you're confusing me. So the, I'm making a motion to table. I'm making a motion to table this because this is highly confusing.
Thank you.
When you work in silos, this is what happens.
Is there a second to table?
Yes.
It's been moved and properly seconded to table this motion. All in favor, would you indicate by raising your hand? Roe Cloud. All opposed, would you indicate by raising your hand? To oppose the table of the motion.
What's your motion?
Of consideration to.
So if you don't know, don't know.
But first, it was moved and properly seconded. Are we saying for the motion plan? If not, all of those were not taken.
There wasn't, Madam Counselor, there was a motion to table. It was, it was this meeting and I picked yourself to take the motion table. And then yes, and that motion. There was, and then it was a motion to table. That failed. That, excuse me, that motion failed. Now we're back to the motion to rescind Kelly Johnson. We have a first and we have a second. Madam President is asking for voters on that particular motion.
Why are we rescinding Kelly Johnson?
That we voted.
Why are we rescinding Kelly Johnson?
We're rescinding because she is no longer interested in providing the services.
Did she ever?
Why? Okay, that's it. That, that's it. Now, now for the, uh, stuff made. I'd like to entertain a motion. All in, yeah, all in. Yeah, I did. But we'll do it again. All in favor of, um, rescinding the motion for, we took, we took the vote. All in favor.
Okay, thank you.
Would you indicate by raising your hand?
Thank you.
Those that are opposed, would you indicate by raising your hand?
I'm abstaining. I don't have any information.
So the motion carries to rescind Kelly Johnson.
Outstanding, thank you.
So you're tableing our Pink Social Strategies.
That's what we are.
That's where we are now. It's been moved and properly seconded. Are there any questions? I have a question. The question is, this person is interested in providing services. They have been interviewed and reviewed by the manager. Well, we would like to have this person, based on their experience, based on thirteen years of experiments in doing this type of work, to, to be available to this, to this community, to this part of the world. So that is, that is a, correct, April, April for Pink Social Strategies. I don't think it's necessary to prolong it. We will not be meeting as far as, as far, this is our meeting for this month. Starting in September, we'll have a workshop, starting back up in regular meetings, uh, the third Thursday. So I'd like not to postpone. These services can be available for us, uh, starting, uh, September, the first part of September. There's been a lot of discussion and concern with regards to social media. Uh, this person, uh, our manager, has interviewed and brought extensive research with. Uh, and found, and found that to be, uh, to be, uh, appropriate for the needs that we have in the world. So if, uh, I would rather not rescind, but I would rather entertain a motion to approve, uh, Pink Social Strategies at this meeting at this time.
I have a question.
So moved.
Uh, is there a second? Second. It's been moved and properly seconded. Now for any questions? Counselor Beatty. Counselor Roe Cloud, you are acknowledged.
Are we terminating the contract with Core Consulting?
Uh, the, the, the services of Core.
Are we terminating the contract with Core Consulting? Of all services involving Core Consulting.
Well, we will no longer require the services of Mr. Core.
Are we terminating the contract?
He doesn't have a contract.
We're terminating his services. We need to make that clear. Of all services relating to the social media, the websites, everything, live streaming, running to get coffee, whatever you hire him to do, we're terminating all services.
And all compensation down to.
Absolutely.
Mr. Core, any services as, as, as we may require. He is not totally, um, not required. Is any services that he may be able to provide in, in the event that we may need services?
No, no, no.
Then I answered your question.
My other question, my other question.
Is he actively to do photography? Is he doing anything?
I have a question here, Counselor. Just a moment. The Vice President was asking me a question and I'm gonna clarify on her question. So if there, she asked a question if, if there was a need for photography. We, we do not have Mr. Core on this particular, um, contractual relationship that we had with him. That, that relationship ends. But just like any other vendor, that you may have services for in the past, you may want something, him to do something in the future. He's not blocked from providing these services.
He should be. He should be. He's based on his experience and based on his experience.
Can I, can I, you're saying that the new person that is coming on will be taking Pink So, Pink Social Strategies, will provide all digital communication services, the website, the social media, the live streaming, and the graphic design services.
That is correct.
That will no longer be done by Core.
Consulting. That is correct. That is, that is a question. Yes, Counselor Beatty, you have.
So my question is, since he's not providing the services that he was hired to provide, what is his compensation going to be? Is he like a fee-for-service type deal? I mean, when you said that he would no longer be, because you said, Mr. Dawson, his services will no longer be, whatever you said, it's so much, whatever, required. So why are we even considering him to take, we can get a photographer, anybody, can we even find another photographer? So why are we still using, when we know that that is a problem? So then you just gonna throw pictures up on stuff? Oh, I'm taking pictures. Like, no, we don't, he doesn't need to be used by because he's abusing what he was hired to do. And we are not all in agreement to the services, so it's best for him to move on, move on. And we can get another photographer. We can hire a, a person just for an event. There's thousands of time. So I'm, I'm, I'm seeing.
Counselor Beatty, you can, you can discuss that later.
What is the question?
Uh, Counselor Beatty, there's nothing conclusive about your question.
The question is, why are we considering Gary Core as a photographer? You're removing his, he was hired to be our webmaster. So you're taking that, that role away from him. Oh, we might use him as a photographer. No, we don't have to use him as a photographer. Why are we even considering?
Because the operative term, Counselor Beatty, is man. That's the operative term.
But it should not be that.
So yeah, that.
If someone has the man, okay, you're gonna hire a counselor. That makes no sense. That makes no sense. And I have another question.
You're not recognized.
I have another question. I still have another question. I still have another question.
Counselor Beatty, do you have any other?
Yes, I am. Well, my, I actually wasn't actually asking my question. My only question was, his compensation does. Whatever, I can't remember the exact figure, whatever his fee was every month. He doesn't need to be making, I don't wanna see him on next month's AP list, the same figure for Gary Core if he has been now removed out of that role. We don't need to keep that.
Counselor Beatty.
I don't wanna see any compensation at all.
He doesn't need to be.
Counselor Beatty, you have to direct questions to the chair.
I didn't direct my question.
But not across him.
Well, that was my only question. Like, I'm not in agreement with him staying, but we just.
Well, that is, that is your prerogative. Uh, Counselor Roe Cloud.
My second question with respect to Pink Social Strategies. I took the liberty of looking at her personal website, and I did not see anything on her personal website that, um, that says she has the experience to do this type of, of work we're, we're asking her to do. Uh, Mr. Dawson, it seems like the majority of her work is in event planning.
I interviewed over the telephone, um, April, and she sent me at least four URLs of the work that she's done. She has twelve years of webmaster experience. She's a graduate of St. Joseph University. She explained to me how our web would be redesigned, how would we have new Facebook, Twitter, and the one that started with the S, which I cannot remember.
Well, my word, we provide the URL so we can say.
Madam Counselor, I respect you. And all that you've said this evening, you asked a question. This young lady, and speaking to her, is qualified, in my opinion, but you are counselors. And so in sending out the proposals, you have to make the decision as to what you want. All I can say is from, all I, excuse me, ma'am, all I can say is from what I heard and what I, my observation, is that she is a candidate for webmasters. It's up to the legislators to decide if you want to do this on the floor, presently. It's either a contingency or it's a vote to hire. So as a secretary, I need clarification.
I has about credentials.
Credentials, I, in my opinion.
In your opinion?
I'm, I'm the board manager. You are legislators. In my opinion, she is qualified to be the webmaster.
But you did not provide the credentials to all counselors, counselors. I did not receive any URLs for me to review to make an educated decision on this.
So this is your packet, Counselor?
No, it's not.
No, that is, you are, Madam Secretary, with due respect, Counselor Roe Cloud is right. I did not provide that. I did for reason, and that's why I'm able to make the statement that I made again.
Carry on.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
But you do recommend it.
I do, I do. Madam President, we have to declare. Earlier, there was a motion to approve, um, April with contingencies. Is the contingency still on the floor?
No.
Thank you. At this time, you had made a statement about the hiring of Pink, or Miss April. So I'm just asking for a motion.
Just a moment, just a moment. The solicitor has indicated that we can do the same thing we did with, with Kelly before. If, in the event that, uh, that this vendor is still uninterested, then we can, we can, you know, we can deal with it next month. So we should, so, so. It's on the floor. It's six o'clock and a half a dozen minutes. If, if you vote to hire her tonight, and she decides that she's taking some other work somewhere else, it's evident, it's moot. So, so we're just gonna call for the vote. Those in favor, would you indicate by raising your hand? Those that oppose, would you indicate by raising your hand?
I oppose.
Are the motion carries? Two, two, two minutes. I'd like to, uh, if the, should not be. For item number six on the agenda, we'd like to move as, as expeditiously as we can. If there are any corrections, deletions, uh, no additions. Uh, if the, if the minutes that you have read and reviewed, if you find any corrections or deletions, uh, please, uh, inform us for June sixth, June sixteen, July twenty-one, and July twenty-seven. Uh, as you will recall, last month, uh, we did not have a full council meeting uh, because certain councils exited, uh, the, the chambers, not really, not, uh, not having a forum to continue to conduct the business. I also want to, um, uh, make one adjustment to this agenda, moving the engineers' report, number eleven, uh, up to number seven, uh, when we proceed. Uh, the, so for the minutes, and if, if, I'd like to have a motion on the floor to it, the floor to approve the minutes for June sixth, sixteen, twenty-one, and twenty-seven, creating corrections or deletions. Uh, it's been moved and properly seconded. Are there any corrections?
Madam President, may I ask that the person who made the motion, I didn't hear it. Excuse me, the person who said it. Thank you.
Any, any, any corrections?
I don't even have those minutes. I only have minutes for July twenty, July twenty.
The other, that's all I have, the twenty-first and twenty-seventh of July. Sorry, Counselor Roe Cloud, do you have any corrections or deletions?
I don't have the minutes for June sixth or June sixteen. I only have July twenty-first and July twenty-seven.
We will, we will, if, if, if it pleases the council, we can table June sixth and sixteen until those minutes are, are provided in the next meeting. So we'll make that, 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 to this rule. Uh, for the twenty, for the, July twenty-first and July twenty-seven, Counselor Roe Cloud, are there any corrections or deletions? Counselor, uh, our Counselor.
Oh, there is, there is. For July twenty-seven. For July 27th, there is a correction. Um, number six, Roman number six, new business, number two. Motion to engage the Valori Group to conduct an efficiency study of the Yaton Borough Police Department in the search for Yaton Borough Chief of Police. That was not the motion that was presented. The motion that was presented related to an investigation, um, with respect to the, uh, the Sean Murcha, Murcha.
And that is not correct.
Yes, it was. That was listed on the agenda from last month. Yeah, you told me, I can't read.
No, the motion, the motion was to approve both, uh, the proficiency study of the Yaton Police Department by the Valori, the Valori Agency. And then, in addition to that motion, was to, uh, approve the Valori Group for the search for the police chief for Yaton Borough.
That is not what was mentioned at the last month's meeting, and that's not what was on the last month's agenda.
If everything is recorded.
Yes.
And everything is, so we can pull down the benefit of Councilor Roque.
Please do, Mr. Dotson, follow through. Thank you. Are there any other observations for the minutes up to 27th? We'll provide. Okay, are there any other observations? Okay. Okay. Um, all in favor of approving the minutes for July 21st and 27th? Uh, would you please indicate by raising your hand? Uh, those are opposed, would you indicate by raising your hand? I oppose. Uh, the motion carries. Uh, for, uh, Mr. Mercuso, would you please come to the podium? Our borough manager.
Thank you. Um, I have, uh, kind of changed the report that I've been doing. I just have a report now, just 11 discussions I used for tonight's meeting. A few months back, we were authorized to do a property condition assessment of this building. That report was provided to, uh, to Jeff, my department partner, to the borough manager, which is currently being evaluated.
Oh, please.
Uh, the borough was awarded a 2021 CDPG grant for sanitary sewer rehabilitation work on Cypress Street. Uh, this project has been postponed for a couple of years because it was the pleasure of the borough, and again, talking with Public Works, to not have this work done until school was out. Um, so, we are currently working on that project now. Uh, but that project would be a, a summer of 2023 project so that we can, it is done when, when school is out, um, at that, on that location. Uh, this year, the borough was awarded a 2022 CDPG grant, uh, for work on Duff Avenue. Uh, we're in the process of, uh, getting a survey of work on Duff Avenue, and we'll proceed with that project. Uh, I do have, um, a couple of boards from the county that have to be signed by the borough manager, and I'll hand those up before I leave. And I expect to get those from you, um, once, at another time. We, uh, have been considering, continuing to work with Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission on another grant, uh, for the West Cop Creek Parkway infrastructure improvements. Uh, this is for a, a series of medians and traffic calming, um, handicap ramps. Uh, that's a rather large grant. Uh, it involves, um, some, it involves PennDOT. So, we did have a scoping meeting with PennDOT this month, and, um, continuing to work with DDRPC and PennDOT on, on proceeding with that project. We, uh, had a Zoom call or a Teams meeting, uh, this month with the library. There's, there's an opportunity for a grant, uh, coming up in October. Uh, and they are looking to do a window and door replacement there. So, looking to get that grant submission together for the library, uh, for that project. Uh, we, we have had several discussions at council meetings about road repairs. Cott Street Parkway, Yaton Avenue, Bailey Road, and, uh, the Speedhump Moment Day. And we met with, um, a paving contractor, uh, Steve Crowell, and we finally have that work scheduled hopefully for the end of October, uh, that we'll move forward. Um, working on a, uh, a center sewer issue on Cyril Avenue. Um, this week, we received, or last week, we received a, uh, a video of the 800 block of Yaton broken lineables. Michael Zola provided us with that video. And, uh, we did review that video today and I'll cover that with Mike, um, in terms of our suggestions for repairs there, and we'll talk about that at a future council meeting. Um, we did also meet with, with Jeff and Mike on, uh, July 15th to review a series of storm sewer projects throughout the borough. Uh, we're breaking up and preparing a cost estimate for each of those. We present those at a future council meeting, meaning also consideration. And then, the, uh, the intersection of McDay and Church, uh, where we had been talking several months about the issues there, uh, we continue to work with PennDOT, uh, on, um, some remediation work at that intersection. Most importantly, the installation of a speedhump on the west side of the intersection on McDay. Uh, that does need PennDOT approval to be installed. Uh, we submitted one series of, uh, we submitted the first application to PennDOT. They came back with a series of revisions. Uh, we made those revisions and resubmitted that last week to PennDOT. Hopefully, that will be approved in the next, um, week. And then, that will be done with the paving work that I mentioned earlier, uh, at the various locations. And then, the only item that I have to make a receipt that would require council approval. Again, if you remember, at the June 6th meeting, um, we talked about the drainage issue. There was a gentleman who came to the council about a drainage problem on his property. Um, we had met, we came up with a solution. It's going to require an easement, uh, between the borough and that property owner. Uh, working with the solicitor's office, we got the solicitor's office, everything that they need to prepare the easement. But, um, although it was discussed at the June 6th meeting, there was not a, there was no vote taken at the June legislative meeting for the solicitor to prepare that easement. So, the, uh, the ask tonight is for Borough Council to approve Borough Solicitor to prepare the easement so we can get that to the property owner and then schedule that drainage work that needs to be done with that property.
Is there an estimated, Mr. Mercuso, is there an estimated cost, um, to, to remedy that, that drainage?
Once, yeah, once we have the easement in place, then we'll be able to prepare the council with, with that cost. Um, we, there were, there were a couple of solutions that were, that were discussed. Uh, and again, I think we've come up with the most economic for the borough. And again, I'll present that at the September meeting once the boroughs present, once the solicitor prepares the easement.
And what is the? Everything, everything's been prepared, the easement. The only thing we need is if council can approve it tonight. The property owner is elderly in our state. She's actually coming in this weekend. Um, so, we have, we're going to get a notary if everything goes through. Hopefully, to meet with them on Monday, uh, because one person, um, it's a, it's a tough signature to draft. But I think we got that lined up.
Okay, so, would you, um, state the, state the motion?
The, the motion would be for council to approve, um, and the boroughs could help with. Uh, big emotion to, to allow the boroughs' listener to prepare the easement documents for signature by the property owner.
Via Mr. Mercuso, may I have a, um, motion, please? Still moved. Uh, is there a second? Uh, Councilor Beatty, second. Uh, it's been moved to property second. Are there any further questions for the?
I have a question. Councilor Roque, so, we don't know the cost, um, that, um, is going to be associated with this, this project at this point.
Right.
So, if the solicitor prepares the easement, and then you find out the cost, and the cost is, let's just say, exuberant, and council votes against the cost.
The, I don't, I, I, I understand the question. I don't think the costs, I mean, exuberance, as you know, it's, it's all relative, right? I think the costs are, are in the, in the $10,000 to $15,000 range, I think is what we're talking about. It's the installation of a pipe coming off Providence. Uh, at one point, we're thinking of taking it all the way down to the creek, um, but we don't think that we need to do that. So, it's just, it's just going to be a, a small pipe coming off of Providence, an end wall, and then some riprap to, to dissipate, uh, the energy. And that, what happened, well, I mean, you know, there was a, the problem is that, that the state did work there, and a lot of that water just went willy-nilly and is not directed, and that's why it's indicating the property owner. We need to just, just direct it directly into the creek.
Okay.
That's what I mentioned, I said, I will have a definite cost estimate because I have to work with RNL to find out.
Yeah, I was just afraid having a solicitor, you know, prepare the easement, drafting the easement, and then you come back and say, well, the cost is going to be like $800,000.
Right, it won't be that.
Quick question for you. Could you be up in location again? Because there were two, uh, two, um, questions before this council in June. One had to do with Herford's Place, and then the other.
That's the one.
So, this is by the, by the house.
Yes, that's right.
May I ask a question? Um, Yaton Avenue has been, uh, just a way for a long, long, long time. You can, are telling me when you might anticipate that that street will be completed?
I thought the motion was on the floor. Yeah. The motion is on the floor, so we'll just, we'll address that. Uh, so, all in favor, so we voted, so all in favor, would you indicate my raise of the hand?
Rose Loud, approved.
Uh, it's, uh, the motion carries. Go to your hands.
And, uh, Councilwoman Johnson, the, um, I'd said earlier, uh, Cott Street Parkway, Yaton Avenue, Bailey Road, and the Speedhump Moment Day, all will be done at the end of October.
Fantastic.
Wonderful.
Thank you so much.
Just one question, Mr. Mercuso. In our conversation about the day Boulevard, can you give us an update on the second speedhump? One anonymous walk of McDay Boulevard since traffic has been flowing in one direction, and there'll be cars parked on both sides of the street? We had that conference, we had that conversation. And for the benefit of the resident who may be doing this, if you can, um, speak to that, we should go a second speedhump, please.
Yeah, the, the good thing about the second speedhump is we don't need PennDOT's approval for it. So, uh, we can include that in this, in this round of, of, when we do this other work, we can include that at the same time.
Also, to the property owner, Mr. and Mrs. Williams, um, they do have ball bricks on their property. So, along with our improvements and their approvals, and their improvements, there's a high probability that their property will not be impacted again by someone immigrated or having a stroke or diabetes attack.
I, I, I really believe, and we've had, as you have, we've had several conversations with PennDOT. We've met out there. I believe that the one speedhump, because the second one further down is, is, has got another purpose, right? That's because the cars are, you know, when, when we change, we're not anticipating change, we're not changing, not making the one-way change with this speedhump on McDay. That's, that's, that's another project, right? So, the, the road will continue to be two ways until we get, until we implement the second part of this, this project. But the, but the installation of the speedhump on the west side of McDay, I believe, be very difficult to come through that intersection with any kind of speed, um, without first wrecking your car. So, I think that will help the Williamses and everyone else at that intersection.
And for the benefit of the residents, we have intensified the lighting at the corner of Church Lane and McDay Boulevard. And the resident owner of property on Church Lane at McDay Boulevard have cut back their trees so it's no longer dark, or particularly dark, at that intersection. And also, a neighbor across the street from Mrs. Williams, she has now protection on her. Is that true? Thank you. She built a wall. There's a wall built that has stones, so it won't let it bounce. It comes, for the way up, if our impacts, it won't, it won't hurt her.
I have a question. Um, are you involved with respect to the common driveways? And maybe, Mr. Dotson, you could give me a status?
Yes, ma'am.
With respect to the common driveways? It's been maybe six months or more. When we last discussed, um, utilizing some of the recovery funds to help assist with repairing the common driveways, where are we right now?
I can speak to the fact that I did tour with our, our co-officer officers as well as the co-director. The suggestion is one of two things, that we, um, buy a large portion of asphalt to be stored at the Public Works Department. And residents for free can come by and pick them up for small dividends. We are looking at a number of vendors who will be able to negotiate with our residents in terms of having, um, their driveways repaired. One of the issues that we're having is that a lot of our residents do not have their deeds to their properties. So, when we go by and we look at the rear of the buildings, they, the contention is, it's not mine. And so, therefore, our co-officers are, have their hands tied somewhat because the resident said, it's not mine, it's hers, and she said, it's not mine, it's theirs. So, because they don't have their deeds, we have an issue in asking them to repair their driveways. To avoid that, we have those two, those two suggestions, and when I come up with a first one, I'll let you know.
No, that's not what I asked. I asked about, I didn't ask about temporary repair. I asked about the permanent repairs with respect to utilizing some of the recovery funds to help assist the property owners. And the property owners not having their deeds, that has nothing to do with anything because deeds are recorded and we can easily just go and pull the deeds. But we all were in agreement that we were going to come up with, um, a plan to utilize some of the COVID recovery funds to help assist the residents with a permanent solution to repair these common driveways.
Don't recall the conversation. I don't recall the conversation. Don't mean to be rude, but because you asked the question, I will not.
We had the conversation.
I will not hesitate to look into using those funds.
No, we had the conversation, now you don't recall it.
As I, for the record, I do not recall.
Okay. All right. Well, Mr. Nichols recalls the conversation. Former Counselor Ron Francis recalls the conversation. Former Counselor Rafi Cave recalls the conversation. But you don't recall our conversation.
For the record, I do not recall the conversation.
Let him leave. Thank you, Councilor. Thank you, Mr. Dotson.
And can I just state for the record as well? July 27th, 2022, agenda for the council special meeting, new business. It says, consideration to engage the services of the Valori Group to conduct an independent third-party investigation to the tragic death of Sean Murcha. What's in the minutes is not reflective of what is in this agenda. And this was the motion that was placed on the floor. Let's pull the tapes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilor, and thank you, Mr. Dotson. That's the, uh, can I?
When you're able, could you take a look at Union Avenue near Denauville? I understand that there's some issues going on there and see if maybe a speedhump might be needed, uh, needed to be put there or a stop sign or whatever you think. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Uh, Mr. Mercuso, you may come to your report.
I have to say, I'm.
Oh, right. Well, thank you, thank you very much, and, um, we'll afford to, with the people. I guess I just have one other question with regards to, uh, the question of people studying, uh, this inner park as it relates to whether that's available, uh, area there, uh, as, as, as being considered for one of the alternative locations for the Yaton Recreation Complex. Any, any updates?
Yeah, I spoke with Mr. Dotson about that, and we are going to provide the borough with a, uh, with a, uh, a cost for that feasibility.
And the other question, with regards to the building here, do you need a motion tonight employing your services for the repairs after your, from the report that you gave earlier on the repairs that need to happen in this building?
I, I don't think we need a motion to see, I think the, the next step would probably be to, um, meet with, with Mr. Dotson, go through the report, um, and also with, with Mike Zola. Go through the report and make a determination. through the report and make a determination which of the repairs are most necessary and imminent, because I don't think we have to really do everything that's in the, that's in the report, so the ones that are, that are most necessary prioritize that, and then we can put together a bid for, to get a bid for, for those repairs.
All right. Yes, Councilor. So you're asking about number feasibility study for Union Park in addition to the one that was at the Yaden Sword Plus for the recreation.
We'd like to have the information, and then there's going to be a town meeting for input from the entire community, town hall meetings, also, we'd like to have those, those items done so that we can see what the, what the residents' preferences are going to be.
Okay, and in addition to what Counselor Johnson said, I brought that speed hump issue up to the mayor and to Lieutenant Burns and Union.
Same location.
Same, but also on Wycombe and Pride, because that's another high traffic, because that's, so I know that that is a school bus stop right on the corner of Providence and Wycombe, and there is a lot of concerns about people blowing through stop signs constantly on Union Avenue and Wycombe, so my question would be, could you speak with both the mayor and the borough to, you know, to answer that?
Question, Mr. Cusso, there's, there's a similar request on Longacre Boulevard. The people often use Longacre, their affair, to avoid going down Baltimore Pike, Baltimore Avenue, so they will use for Wycombe and come straight through, and they ignore, ignore the stop signs, they just go right through, and there are now children on the block, small children, residents and families that have recently moved there, so there is a concern there for study or evaluation.
The truth.
Yep. Okay.
Any other, any other questions?
I will be asking council to peruse a proposal for speeding meters that are mobile, and so to address the issue of speed humps, police patrols, traffic patrols, we will be asking for two of these meters, and they will be positioned, as you spoke, on Longacre Boulevard, Union Avenue, wherever is determined that they need them, so I will be asking council to look at that proposal.
I'm going to pass these up.
You have an interview, Mr. Cusso. They announced the, the approval of the 191,000, was that for, just about the, was that, 191,000, the grant? Oh, that's the 30% for the CPG.
Right.
From the, okay.
That's one, that's one for the.
For the.
One, one eighty-one.
That's one eighty-one.
One eighty-one, 181,000.
Madam President, I ask for clarification on our engineer.
Yes, sir.
Sir, can you address the issue that came up last month about the 194,000 and our 30% contribution, which I think was around 286, 287,000, and the probability of us receiving that money, and if we were to receive that money, when would the Borough of Yaden and its council be obligated to chip in their 30%?
That, that would, that would definitely be a 2023 project, so it would be, you know, not something for this, this fiscal year.
Wouldn't pair that.
And I think, and it's always hard to, to talk about probability of receipt, receipt of a grant, but, you know, I think it was a good grade application, and, you know, we'll just sort of see how it goes. I, you know, they will, they'll announce them probably late, early, probably in November. So it definitely would not be a, like a 2022 project, it will be a 2023, maybe even 2024, right?
So it would not have any impact on our budgets, in your opinion, for 2023, but in 2024?
No, absolutely not.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and enjoy.
All right, thank you.
Next will be the manager's report.
The report will be for this state of leaving date of July 21, 2022, 1/6/26/22 Borough Manager met with members of the Pinoni Engineering Firm, Mr. Wilkins, our appropriate words to discuss the remediation project at Seven Dollar Place, also discuss with the engineering firm, the use of a GIS surveillance system for underground piping issues, since we have a lot of them, also rewriting of the project scope for Community Park top lot, so that we can begin the process of ordering children's equipment then installed in. On January 6, a Borough Manager visited Industry 60 to finalize the vandal designs with Vice President Johnson and the place to find a quarter. On the 18th of July, the Borough Manager was present at Flag Day, which in my opinion was arousing success, with live music, dancing, and street vendors, and the return of our cars. The department involved included, the departments involved include the Recreation Department, Code Department, Public Works Department, the Police Department, and Fire Department. The event was within our budget numbers, donations were solicited, and the estimated, and it was estimated around $6,700 in donations. The Borough did receive a refund of $800 from the Zito Brothers production due to equipment malfunctions. On the 15th, Borough Manager had a Zoom conference with Troy Leonard and Joshua Thomas of Calum Mayo, people of architects concerned in feasibility study, its allowable uses, including a conclusion summary of feasibility uses, meaning the building of a recreation center on that site would be doable. The creation of open recreational spaces with the assistance of a landscape architect, that's all in one sentence, copies of the Phil, feasibility study, along with the summary are billed upon request. On 6/30/22, the Borough Manager accompanied Mr. Roy Hunter to Bourbon Hills Farm in Marco, Newtown Township, where the Recreation Department and the farm have a donation ship that allows for some of the residents of Yaden to receive free vegetables. Mr. Jack Goldenberg, CFO of the farm, gave Mr. Hunter and myself a tour of the farm. I also visited Ken Garrett in that area, where, where some of the young people from Yaden have benefited from participating in a free, one-of-a-kind camping experience. That's my report for July 21st. What I'll do now is give you a quick overview of my report for August 18, 2022, and my report consists of recommendations to council, and one being updating, the updating was specifics for code and zoning ordinance, which I put in the packages, researching the price for two new code vehicles through CoStar, our vehicles, one is 2001, the other one is 2003 or seven, we had air conditioners, we had an air conditioning issue, we had a window that didn't work, so it was due time to replace those, and for the sake of energy efficiency, we're looking at four, four-cylinder vehicles. I'm also recommending to update the current job application to include a criminal background check, that has been done, and felony, not in the last five years, but ever, has been added to the application, so at this particular point, anyone applying for a position at Yaden Borough will be given that new application, which will have, have you ever been convicted of a felony? Recommendation that the engineer, no, excuse me, recommendation to review the new system for security at Borough Hall, and that simply means that our key fob system is old and outdated, the magnet is no longer work properly, so our lieutenant was kind enough to forward me a proposal, which I in turn will forward to council, asking for that perusal of the proposal, so we can get on with revising, or reinstalling, or having a new system installed. And the recommendation that the engineer report is read thoroughly, as there are issues that require immediate attention. We have, my assistant and myself have forwarded the entire report by way of email to all of the councils, if you did not receive one, please let me know, and I will resend it. The building is not in the greatest of shape, we don't have the money to do all this necessary, but there are immediate remediation projects that need to take place, so I ask the council as a whole to take a look at that. Consideration in the near future for a proposal for a new air conditioning system for Borough Hall. Upon my request, we put in three new mobile air conditioning units in the auditorium, they are working fine in conjunction with the air conditioning system that we currently have, but we're down to two units that work out of six. So in the very near future, we will be asking council again to look at a proposal to replace the entire air conditioning system for Borough Hall, because it is at least 15 years old and is falling apart. My second item would be on dated August 1, Borough Manager Martha Scottling, direct sale representative for Copent Incorporated, and Mike Brazullo of Public Works, he's our foreman, to discuss what potential top lot equipment would be suitable for Community Park new top lot. The discussion is still ongoing, we now have a different vendor, an additional vendor, and Counselor Talia Jones, Porter and myself will be meeting with the vendor on the 25th at 1 o'clock to choose or look at equipment for the top lot. On the 5th of August, Borough Manager conducted a series of ride-alongs with the code inspectors covering their specific assigned areas. I am happy to report that most of the borough, of the borough's neighborhoods are maintained at above average. A walk-through was also completed with our co-director, Rupert Stokes, we documented the need for several improvements along Church Lane and Longacre Court, which is at the rear of Longacre Court, and also on Redwood Avenue, upon revisiting these locations, all of the improvements as stated have been made. Lastly, on the 11th of August, a Zoom meeting was conducted with the staff from Pinoni Engineering Firm concerning, and this is our engineer spoke on this early, this is reading, just repeated, concerning the Keystone Rank application for the replacement of windows and doors at the Yaden Public Library. Madam President, Council, this is my report.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
With respect to number three, you said you, you're happy to report that most of the borough's neighborhoods are maintained at above average. I, I disagree with you. I don't understand what your standards are with respect to quality of life, but I know the fact that I have sent you several photographs of some very troubling issues, okay? Some of those issues are still outstanding, weeks later, still outstanding. On my block alone, there were several issues, which include holes in the roof that's falling down, that's been like that for maybe almost a year, and it still has yet to be addressed. I've seen sidewalks that are in disrepair. I have photographs of all of these things that I have reported, and they are still not rectified. So I don't know which side of Yaden, which blocks you actually perused, but I've walked the entire Yaden, and I see a lot that's not taken care of.
As well today.
Yeah, images that were sent out, that was distributed earlier, these pictures, I mean, I had these same pictures actually, but I'm not the only one that sees this, we see fences that are in disrepair, falling down. There's the fence right down there, Washington Woods, I'm constantly reporting Washington Woods, their fence is in disrepair, not only is the fence in disrepair, but they have overgrown greenery. This is throughout the entire Yaden Borough, this is not acceptable. It's not acceptable, so again, I strongly disagree that neighborhoods are maintained at above average.
I think, I, I respect your opinion, I would ask, Madam President.
These are facts.
I would ask, Madam President, I would ask, Madam President, that our co-director, who is present and will give a report, can address those issues? You and I having this, this discussion previously is documented, at least most of what Council Roedclaw has stated, if you'd be kind enough, Madam President, with your permission, to ask him to come to the mic, please.
Yes, Mr. Stokes, would you come to the mic for your report, sir?
Good evening, Council, and residents.
Good evening.
The code report for July 2022, we had two zoning use applications, one was for Bobby's, Bob 17 Church Lane, it was a business office that was approved, 918 Mount Avenue, that was a debt that was also approved. There was no zoning hearing applications for July, our hot spots throughout the borough, some of that was reported. Church Lane Bridge, Fairwood Avenue side, on Yaden side, across from the bar that's there, it's Upper Garvey side, we've had some illegal dumping, Public Works in Upper Garvey hasn't taken care of that. We had issues down Forest Creek Apartments, Street under North Front Street, we had trash pickup issue, they have issued citations, Marston Wood Apartment Complex actually was abated by the borough, our Public Works Department actually cleaned it up to a point where it was not anymore outstanding craziness, bushes and weeds, they actually took care of that last week. We also issued citations, and we put a lien on the property. In reference to that, I received a call today from a new management company, they actually are a management company for 400 South Lansdown, they are taking over managing Marston Woods, and I have a meeting with the, the business owner of the management company, so we can take care of the Marston Woods issue. Action items, seats to shade tree removals are being completed, stumps are being grinded, letters went out for repairs where, where the stumps were removed, for the owners to replace them, some owners already started replacing the sidewalk where it was removed. We have notified a lot of owners and contractors, there are not the lead branch clippings in the street, it causes, we issued citations to a few people in reference today. There was no fire-related issues in July. Cloaked items, Macabee Court Senior Living System, Living Complex, construction is complete, it was signed off by our commercial inspector. 543 Cypress Street, there was a property with a real wall that's falling off, the owner contracted a contractor that was taken care of, and the property is secured again. Upcoming items, Forest Creek Apartments, the annual inspections were scheduled for this week, and they were postponed per the owner of the property, there was some issue down there where he wants to be there when we do the inspections. The district court is now scheduling court cases from 2019 through 2022, and that was because when COVID was, there was no court hearings, so every citation that was issued, they are of scheduling court hearings now. Pennsylvania Association of Code Officials, they have a call forum coming up in September 2022, 23, for framing inspections per the 2018 IRC in the fire protection system. As the building code official, I have to take CONED classes and training, updated training, and updating, updated changes in the code to keep my building code official certification as the borough building code official. Important issues, we still need to appoint a Borough Planning Commission and a zoning officer. Board has changed, I know Mr. Dodson brought it up, we are, the zoning board is actually still working on changes of some of the zoning updates, and as Council Roedclaw said, the rear driveways, one of the questions was what decision was made about the possibility of funding to assist the residents. Property maintenance abatement for July was $385, and for the total for the year is $14,299.66. Code revenue for July was $178,663.50, and that completes my report.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Remare crossing, I reported several months ago, they had exposed electrical flyers on the outside.
hanging up on the outside of the wall of several of the units.
The cable box. They are actually, I spoke to the owner. They are cable boxes that they are trying to find the covers for them to replace them.
They're still exposed?
Yes. He's still trying to find them, or he's going to have to fill them in the box. And that's a responsibility on the cable company.
But again, how much leeway do you give? I mean, it's been months.
I understand.
It's been months.
I understand.
Not only that, but the dumpsters back there are an issue. There's dirty mattresses, mattresses there every week.
And every Monday when I come in, I take pictures and we write down a citation.
So I believe at this point in time, well, we're past that point in time, but the solicitor did say to me, but we have habitual offenders, that he can help, he can help by sending correspondence to these habitual offenders and letting them know this is what we're going to do from this point on. Am I correct?
I, I would need, I don't need a, a vote, but I would at least need just some direction from President Harris, just if she says, "Do that," done. But, but I would need some, I don't, I would just do that on my own. You have my summary of how it would be done. I'm familiar with that kind of work, would be fine doing it, but I would, I would need to be told by, by councils.
But then it's something that would help with these habitual offenders. Um, also, quick question. There's a home right off of Long, um, West House Creek that has all their indoor furniture outdoors on the lawn. It's been like that for weeks, again. So I'm not quite understanding why I must have magic eyes because I see these things, but no one from code sees these things. So.
And you said off of West House Creek?
Yeah. And again, I have photographs of that. And my last thing is, I have, I just want to make clear that we absolutely have an ordinance that prohibits any distribution of materials to be affixed to motor vehicles. I believe it's Chapter sixty-one, Advertising Materials, Section sixty-one dash seven. All materials distributed must be placed upon each property of the resident or business to which they are distributed in a manner that will prevent the material. So we're at the borough, and we're going against our own codes.
I was unaware that our newsletter was distributed that way.
Yes, they were. Now, other businesses are going to follow suit, and now they'll start attaching materials to people on their vehicles. I always wanted to force the law and break it at the same time.
I understand.
Thank you. Another question from Councilor.
Just one more question. Can you address, um, either now or afterwards, if property on Councilor's Row Cloud block that has the tarp, the fallen roof shingles, the lower fallen roof shingles? You and I spoke about it. It's, I think, a person who is elderly and cannot afford the repairs to that particular apartment. Can you address that, please?
Well, I know Inspector White is, that's his area. He did talk to the homeowner, and that is what she advised him, that she was unable to take care of at this time. Uh, he did leave notices on her property.
What notices were left? Were they violations or citations?
Well, it's usually a violation notice, and that's what we issue when we go out to people.
Would you be kind enough to tell our Council Row Cloud tomorrow what was issued and the difference, for the benefit of our residents, between a violation and a citation?
You would like me to?
Yes.
Okay. A violation is a notice to let you know that you are not in compliance with the borough ordinance with whatever, uh, ordinance that you're violating with, as per say, the trash, grass, snow. And what happens is, we give you a timeframe to correct it. If you do not correct it within that timeframe, then a citation is issued. That citation is issued to the property owner. We take that citation to the court, and the court notifies the owner that a citation was issued in reference to them not being compliant with the borough ordinance.
My last follow-up question would be, is there a dollar amount affixed to the violation?
This, I know, not to the violation, but to the citation.
What is the dollar amount that's fixed to the citation?
The site, the dollar amount that we have in the ordinance starts at a hundred dollars to up to a thousand dollars a day.
Thank you, sir.
So, follow-up.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I emphasize, if that's what you understood, sir.
Yes.
However, what is the next step? What is the next step? Do we just leave it as is? What's the next step? What happens when the roof sustains so much damage from the weather? It's already dilapidated, and this person walks outside and he climbs over top of her or him, then what happens?
Well, hopefully that does not happen, but what, but, but what can be done now is I can reach out to COSA, which is in the county, to see if they have any funding or assistance for the residents to get that fixed.
Have a tap, work unit, U N S, they were looking to come to me to assist. They reached out to COSA earlier this year, and no one reached out to them. They are currently in Lansdowne assisting.
Did anyone pass that information on to the borough? Because I never knew that they were available, because I would have contacted them myself.
All right. Are there any other questions we'd like to complete the agenda here?
Yes.
Could you please still contact?
Yes, I will. I will reach out to them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, can I ask you, like, those photos that you have?
What?
The ones that you have down, that you were getting, oh, no, I thought you had. The photos that you have.
I'll have them to you tomorrow.
Thank you, thank you. Solicitor's report, uh, Mr., Mr., Bob.
Solicitor's report was, uh, meant, it's executive session material. Um, that was canceled tonight. Um, but we, if any councillors need an update, they can certainly reach out to me, and we will have the full update, um, on the executive session materials at the next legislature's.
Thank you, Mr. Bob. Um, Tax Collector's report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm going to give you the financial report, but before I do that, I want to remind the residents that in September, on the twenty-second, as we made an upset sale, unfortunately, I've been going through the list of properties on the list to find out if there's any more money due to the borough. There's over a hundred names listed on the upset sale list. I also want to remind the people who are on the list, you have to give a notice. The sheriff's going to come out once more time. And you also can make arrangements now to pay in installments with the Tax Claim Bureau. So I want to encourage you to do so, so that your property is not sold for what I have noted as non-low amounts of back due taxes. Some is as low as four hundred dollars.
Oh, my God.
But you can lose your house, because any house that has not paid its taxes in the last two years is going to be on the upset sale. So if you know somebody, if you are that somebody, contact the Tax Claim Bureau, make arrangements.
Can you, um, tell me which tax are you speaking about? Is that the school tax? Is that a borough tax? Is that a county tax? Which one are you speaking about?
Oh, it could be county taxes, but it also going to be borough taxes.
So you're talking about borough and county tax?
Yes.
Okay. The, I'm sorry, you said that was September twenty-second?
Yes, September twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, in, um, in media.
Okay.
The income for, from seven eighteen twenty twenty-two, from the last report to the current of eight twelve twenty twenty-two, that was income for real estate, trash, and borough sewer. The base amount of the real estate was twenty-three thousand four hundred five hundred and twelve dollars and sixty cents. The discount was two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty cents. The penalty amount for, is eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty-three cents for a total of eight, two, twenty-four thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-five cents. For the borough trash, we collected four thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Penalty, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars for a total of four thousand six hundred and seventy-four dollars. The borough sewer collected was thirteen thousand ninety dollars. The penalty, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars, total of thirteen thousand four hundred and forty-four thousand and seventy-five dollars. Grand total's forty thousand eight hundred and thirty, fifty-two and. For the face amount, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty cents for the discount, and one thousand seven hundred and six dollars and twenty cents for penalty. Total collected altogether, thirty-two thousand two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty cents.
May I ask you another question? Several people had problems with their sewer and trash appears saying that they weren't paid, some weren't paid. Where does that fit in with the borough, with the tax?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
Oh, I have a question for you, uh, Tax Collector. And it's, it's my understanding that if a person mails their tax payment in, and the tax payment does not equal, uh, what your record indicates, like, for example, if the person owed fourteen hundred ninety dollars, and they sent fourteen hundred eighty dollars, that their payment is actually being returned to them? Is that any validity to that?
Well, I don't know about that margin, but, but the reality is that if we put it on the books, then they'll still be listed as not being compliant. And then they'll have, then they'll get a notice that they're delinquent in the next year.
So, but if they're.
But if there's, if there's some, if there's some minor discrepancy, like the end, end change or under five dollars, I don't return it.
But you return it if it's not, is it? I, I was given the information from a neighbor that they got their check back. They may have had some issue mistaken it. But to have the check go back instead of a letter that says your payment was incomplete, or your payment lacked this amount of money, could you forward that? It seems to me that if you're returning tax payments, that that's, that's worse than, than sending a letter saying you're short this amount. Uh, because once the money goes back to the, to the taxpayer, uh, it's like, you know, they, they had a mistake, they, they may not have realized it. But to get their tax money back seems to me to kind of be, um, you know, really inconvenient for the resident, for that to happen. Uh, is there any policy?
Well, it's, well.
Past practice that would.
Well, my understanding from past, my understanding from past practices is that, uh, if the check does not equal to the amount that's due on the bill, uh, then it, then the bill is not paid. Right. It's like you can go to the grocery store to buy some groceries, and you give them half the money, you're not, you're not going to get all the groceries to go.
Well, that, yeah, that, I, I understand the analogy, but perhaps we could have that conversation, not necessarily here. It's just that I wasn't aware whether that was a, a practice predominantly done. Uh, with, I'd never heard of it before, that's why when I heard it, I certainly would like to have that conversation with you. And I'm sure that if, if there are mistakes that, that, that a resident is having in their amount of their tax dollars, because if, if, you know, given the situation with any taxing, uh, municipality or school district, uh, when they say pay the tax, and your taxes, you send the check in, and maybe you didn't account for the discount, and you sent your check in, it seemed to, to turn dollars away from the town like that, and with any other complication that could arise after that. But may, may not be the best approach. I'm just, but I'd love to have additional dialogue with you about that.
Anytime you're ready, ma'am, President.
Thank, thank you so much. Uh, yes, um, just a moment, Councilor. Mr. Dotson.
Mrs. Hughes, I want to ask you a question. Of the one hundred residents' homes who are vulnerable to being taken because of minimum amount of money, does that set off long bells for you? And do you have any information in prior administrations where that number was a hundred, a one hundred? And as our tax collector, is there any communications from your office to the one hundred people, or any entity, to the one hundred people that they're, that they are in danger of losing their homes um, to the tune of forty dollars, four hundred dollars, eight hundred dollars?
That is a very big concern of mine. I was, um, flabbergasted when I went through the figures and saw, uh, how much was owed on some of. Now, some of them owe significant amount of money to the borough. Um, and the other thing is that this hasn't, this isn't just new to them, because they've known about this for at least two years, some of them longer than two years. So I have been talking to the tax, to the Tax Claim, um, Bureau in media to see what it is, and it's my understanding that they also are going to send out a second notice and reminder, and the sheriff is going to make a visit to remind people that, um, the tax sale is coming up and make arrangements. I'm concerned because some people may be like the other person referenced in the report, uh, we just heard, may be elderly and not able to deal with it. Um, or may not even understand the papers that have been set on their doors. Um, I don't know that I can go and visit everybody's home, um, that's on the list and deal with it. So, uh, if you have suggestions, I'd love them to hear them, but this is my first time experiencing it, and I would not like to see people lose their homes for, um, knocking out some money.
Thank you, Ken. Thank you so much, Tax Collector. Thank you.
Mrs. Hughes, I have a question.
Yes, I did. Um, thank you. I had a senior resident approach me several times, and I referred her to not feasting apples. Um, in regard to twenty seventeen, there seemed to be a lot of discrepancies. Or is that bringing a bell with you about residents owing back taxes that year? Something happened that year?
Twenty seventeen?
Yeah, and, because that's what she reported back to me, she's told. And I'm wondering, can she just speak to you? She's out of the area right now, but, um, she was told that that's a year that keeps coming up. There, there was some type of discrepancies. I'm wondering if a lot of those people, I don't know, this is just what was told to me, um, way before your time, but I was just wondering, can she just speak to you directly about this issue? Because I think.
She can call me and she can ask some, ask some information together. We can take a look.
Yeah, because she called Keystone, they keep picking her back to the borough, and Mr. Pickle was told her, there's something about that year that seems to keep coming up, and I thought you might have been aware of it.
Now, you said Keystone. Now, Keystone is a rage.
Keystone.
Councilor, Councilor.
Is it because?
No, Keystone, Mr. Hurley was asked.
Yes. No, so I can, well, I don't know. This is second-hand information, but I'm going to put her in contact with you.
Well, Councilor meeting, the, the solicitor is aware of, of about four hundred and twelve residents received letters saying that they did not, for twenty seventeen, saying that they did not pay their taxes. saying that they did not, for twenty seventeen, saying that they did not pay their taxes. And a lot of those residents were seniors, uh, who knew that they normally, the way that the bank, the way that they paid their taxes was done, but they didn't, some were had, had health issues, and they weren't able to locate, uh, the receipts, but they were in error. And one of the, uh, agencies or companies that, that we use to collect delinquent taxes, um, had sent those letters out. And I believe, Mr. Boggs, that you've given updates on that. So they, they were correct, most of them were correct. So the lady you're referring to has not been clarified, as should be.
It's more, um, regurgitating more what Mr. Nichols told to me, but there, there was, uh, a few months back, there were a lot of sent in, in error, but it didn't, it didn't end up being this, as big of a problem as, as-
Okay, yeah, because she, she keeps saying, I keep calling-
You gotta have verification.
So, I, she said, well, I asked them about twenty seventeen.
Yeah, definitely.
All right, so I knew I wasn't making up a date. I don't know.
And we moved on from one of the collection companies that, that was responsible for that.
She mentioned Keystone, but that was-
No, it's Portnoy.
Keystone, that's what we want, Portnoy. Okay, thank you, thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
So, they seem to know.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Uh, next, I would like for, for those, um, department heads, of course Finance is not here, Mr. Nichols is actually on vacation, but we look forward to him getting back and answering some of your finance questions, uh, to Councilor. Uh, Community Affairs, ordinance and zone, Mr. Rupert Stokes did address some of this. Uh, it's in the report on the ordinance and zone, there needs to be some updates there. Uh, Public Works, uh, I would like for Public Works to, rather than prolong our meeting here tonight, to Public Works to just simply do a summary, uh, of any, any announcements or notices that we should be made aware of. So Public Works, are you here?
I don't think we have the resources.
Okay. Uh, do you have any information, Mr. Dodson?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Uh, for, uh, Community Affairs, of course, we have not met, or the summer people have been on vacation. So we committed reports. Uh, what about the Fire Department? Is anyone from the Fire, Fire Department here, can give a summary? Okay, here and now, uh, for the Police Department, uh, Mr. Burns. And if you could do a from July inclusive of, of, of June, I mean, excuse me, of July and, and, uh, present, uh, August.
I don't have the stats, I'm sorry, presently, apparently I have the stats for July. Uh, Police Department, six, six hundred and eighty one foster services were done in July. Uh, there were five hundred and ninety-seven apartment tickets issued for tomorrow, uh, six non-traffic citations, and there was only one criminal arrest for the month of July. Uh, I did an interesting interview with a part-time applicant. Um, I completed her background today, so I wasn't the only guy who'd gone on the agenda. Uh, I was going to ask for a motion to approve hiring based on her physical and psychological evaluation, but I just couldn't act it down by my cheek. Uh, but I'm, I'm sure we can do that right now, so once I have that, I'll get that together for Council.
Okay, I would love to have those completed before we make a motion to approve it.
I, I meant a motion, intentional, but be fast, not, not motion without sort of-
Uh, we'll get, we'll get back to you.
Do you want to stall, because this is for the please?
Why? Yeah, I have a question about that, why?
What I, what I would also like, is included in your report, the, uh, the, the visit from the, uh, agency that's going to be doing the proficiency study of the department?
Yes, I know, last week, I believe.
Okay, okay, any, any observations from that report?
Not, yeah, they're supposed to send a questionnaire out, um, I believe tomorrow, and, uh, that's the last presentation I have.
Okay, on the, um, let me just get the, the view of Council. Is there any objection to approving before those? I know that Civil Service Commission, we don't have that fully, fully staffed. Uh, how are you evaluating these applicants for part-time?
Uh, for part-time, that's the way we've, we've always done it. They come in, they interview with two to three officers, um, determinations made from there, whether they're going to move forward, move forward, background investigation. Uh, background investigation consists of, uh, visiting all employers, finding out discipline records, uh, attendance records, uh, their work history, uh, the meter, stuff like that. Um, we also do home visits, where we talk to neighbors, uh, and we go through a list of their references, we speak with all references. Uh, this particular applicant, uh, is, was already a police officer, she's now working for, uh, the Emergency Management Department of Philadelphia. Um, so she would like to get back into police work for part-time, um, she's a resident. Uh, I did email her resume to everybody this afternoon, I don't know if anybody had a chance to look at it.
I didn't get a chance to look at it.
But I was sent out this afternoon.
So, uh- I would like to make a motion to, uh, hire Danielle Pettyjohn, uh, as a borough police officer, contingent upon her passing, um, the physical and psychological examination.
It's been moved from the second, motion to table. Is there a second? For motion to table, is there a second?
Better question, motion on the floor is with contingencies to hire, I think I'm not, I'm not-
Danielle Pettyjohn as a part-time gay borough police officer.
Yes. There's a motion to table. Is there a second?
No.
Is there a second?
Yeah, contingent means that we're not going to hire her until she passes. If you vote for that, we're going to wait until she passes the psychological test and every other requirement before she's hired. We're not just hiring her wholesale, that's what contingent means.
And this will be prior, this will be prior to, this will be prior to, um, the September Council meeting, so.
That's the reason I'm requesting it.
It sounds feasible.
So, here's no, here's no table?
Maybe they need to know whether she's black or white.
They approved, you know, this Council approved the hiring of Kelly Johnson, baseball contingency.
There's a motion on, there's a motion on the floor for contingencies.
Yeah, no, there's a motion on the floor to table it, Mr. Burns.
There was no second, there's no motion.
We made the first one, I seconded, we never voted.
No, because there was another motion to table, unless we have, unless you, unless there is a vote, I vote, I vote, I second. I second. So, all, all in favor, to table the motion, indicate by raising your hand.
Why?
Why?
Why? It is a big deal, it's public safety.
The motion, the motion failed.
The motion to table failed, so, and the original motion, the higher is on table, I mean, it's on the floor.
Yeah, but the motion can, can be considered. All in favor of the motion, um, based on the contingency, would you indicate by raising your hand?
First, I have a question.
No.
Okay.
Uh, okay. Would you indicate, would you indicate, can you repeat the motion, please? Repeat the motion, because- Uh, Councilor, would you, you'll repeat the motion?
I make a motion to hire Danielle Pettyjohn for part-time employment with the Yaden Borough Police Department, contingent upon successful, um, passing of her physical and psychological examination. Stand.
She just repeated the motion. Are there any, are there any questions?
Yes.
Um, you're not recognized, Mr. Mayor. You're not recognized. They, uh, I'm sorry, I'm going to call for the vote, would you indicate by raising, excuse me?
Why couldn't I not speak?
If you can indicate by raising your hand for the hiring of a part-time, it's over, indicate, indicate. Indicate by raising, indicate by raising your hand. Councilor. I approve.
Yes.
The vote is now, the motion carries, thank you. Uh, Mr. Stokes, have her, oh, okay, thank you, sir. Um, Mr. Stokes-
Oh, my question, Madam Lieutenant, uh, we believe, uh, you said the test will take place next week? You said our testing will take place next week?
I, it's a spatial, I'm pleased with my two.
Okay, and thereafter, how soon will the results come in?
Um, both physical examinations will, uh, first, I guess, separate back, see my psychological, day or something like that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Stokes, for Emergency Management?
Uh, Emergency Management, the report stated that the FEMA has changed a lot of the requirements for municipal and local emergency management coordinators. So there will be a lot of classes that will be coming up in the near future in reference to, uh, filling in all the requirements that you must have as the emergency manager coordinator. Um, so there's no other information?
That's in September?
No, this is actually classes, they, they changed the requirements as the emergency management coordinator. You have to meet a lot of requirements that the state, uh, has put in place. I would say maybe about twenty to twenty-five classes that you have to take. And then it has to get turned over to the county emergency management coordinator for you to be approved. So that's the only thing that's covered up.
Okay, fine. All right. Uh, Mr. Stokes, one, uh, one question with respect to emergency management.
Um, there are courses that councilors are required to take, um-
We, yes, I sent that out, uh, last year, and gave everybody information to actually take the courses. Uh, that doesn't come back to me, it goes to the county, so I don't know who took the classes.
Well, I actually took the classes. But if you, if a councillor does not take the class, does that affect the borough in any way?
Well, I was notified by the county emergency manager coordinator. You, every councillor should have those classes that was required. That actually is, it, it's good for you to have those classes, because the funding that comes down from the FEMA and from the government, that's what they look at to make sure that you meet those requirements.
So, if all councillors are not taking those courses, do you need?
Need to take them.
They need to take them.
Yes.
Because our funding will be affected by things.
That is correct.
Councilor, please, do you have the information?
Uh, no.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Henderson here, so I'll just say a few words. Um, I had a great time with Brad, and I think a lot of people did, we had a lot of fun. Um, the new banners have been put up basically on church lane. Um, they're really pretty, I've been getting a lot of comments, people really like them. Well, yeah, well, maybe you don't, and that's your, that's your choice, but majority rules, so most of the people in Yaden do like them. Um, and they like the sayings on them, maybe you'll pay attention to the sayings, they're really nice. And, um, they're basically on church lane, we have a few scattered throughout, but hopefully, uh, next year, when we go through the budget, we can get a little bit more, and you all put some sayings to them too, uh, some words of admiration, thank you.
All the other reports will be accepted as presented to the, to the Council. Um, the, with regards to any of the, um, residents may wish to speak at the end of this meeting, if you have a personal issue, uh, with your property, your personal request or, or observation, you may do that, uh, over the next ten minutes. If any resident has a personal issue that they would like, the call department will the manager to address. You may come to the podium now, give your name and your, not your actual address, just the street that you live on. Uh, you may do that now.
Can I answer a quick question?
Yes.
What is our workshop meeting for September?
Uh, the workshop meetings for September, Councilor, um, Joe Blodens-
So, the workshop meeting is every Monday, uh, of the month, the first Monday, I'm sorry.
September is a holiday.
I'm sorry, the first Monday of each month, except for the week that has passed.
We have labor, yes, so I, yes.
So Tuesday, I said we're going to do Tuesday.
I have an impression, I have an impression of how to do it.
I'm going to accept, I'm going to accept your point.
When am I going to, when am I going to be able to give my report?
The mayor did not hear the answer.
We don't really accept it.
Yeah, when, when am I going to be able to give my report?
I have your report, so.
I think it's probably still there. The residents don't have his report.
I do not have.
We don't have his report. She came to hear the mayor's report.
Listen down.
When am I going to sign?
You know what? You know, I, you know what, I find that this is very, this is unnecessary, it's very disrespectful. We allow the borough manager to ask questions and make statements, we can't allow our mayor to make statements and ask questions. He's not allowed to, and it's not right, it's not right. The mayor needs to give his report, he should be allowed to ask questions. And you should give your report, because this is very disrespectful, and I'm not going to stand. Hey, you have a report! Hey, you have a report! It's not right. It's not right. It's just not right, it's not right. Well, look, don't you hum it, sporty. You hum it, sporty.
I'm not talking to you, Councilor.
I just witnessed the borough manager having cocked lunch, asking questions, having a long report. You put behind the borough man, and I'm not going to ask questions.
I'm going to actually respect the chair, mayor.
There's something wrong, respect the mayor, respect the mayor.
On the count, they're putting them, they have the power, the Councilor.
You can't respect all that officials, then end them, then end them, because it's not right, it's not respectful.
Containment shit.
I, I, I just waited for a couple hours to speak, so I'm moving to a property, and I'll say.
That's not right.
We just need a couple hours to speak.
By all means, there's no other voting. You may, you may give your, you may, you may give your-
Yaden Avenue, four of us, so the house in Yaden Avenue, somehow it is too close to you all, you can't look, you can't see. They're not looking good. Also, I think you all should think that's ridiculously way a lot of you act.
Adjacent to your, adjacent to your property, there, there's a concern.
Yes. The neighbors, when they don't clean snake, I'm tired of seeing snake in my yard because of all the dirt insurance that they kept. Yaden Avenue. The house that is closed, they're close to the road. They're close to the police station, they're close to the fire station. If you look at it, they're drawn there, they're look the walls. Nobody can tell me they don't see. Sometime, you have to look, but sometime you don't even have to look, it's right in your face. And there shouldn't be no favor to this area. Because that's how I felt. Look at the Yaden Avenue, look the walls. Right in the beginning, beginning of the wall, police station, the fire station, all of you just look.
Okay, so, so he'll take, the manager, um, will make a note of it.
Is it the property of Redwood, and, and property of Redwood and Yade, or next to you?
Next, next to me.
Okay, I, I, thank you, I'll give you the address.
It's not a vacant lot?
No, it's not vacant.
Okay, it's a, it's a property.
I'll give you the address at the end of the meeting.
Okay, and Ms. McDonald?
Yes, um, it may have been addressed, but I stepped out a couple of times when the engineer was up here. Did you talk about, um, McDade Boulevard, where you're coming from, uh, East York?
You got provisional approval, you got provisional approval for a pen to put a, a, a bump there, a traffic light.
No, no, not a bump, I'm talking about when you first enter into Yade, or first entered to Cox Creek.
Oh, wow.
Before you get to Yade.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's like, it was repaired before, but then in no time it was bumped, you know, it could destroy your car.
Right.
And, um, I know that they're doing things to, you know, repair, uh, so can you please consider that area? When you first enter in on Cox Creek, from, from where, Chester Avenue?
Yes.
When you go up that, that...
You're right, there is a, there is a slope that...
Chester and McDade?
Chester, the Chester.
Yes, at the beginning of McDade.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
That's an, that is an underground project that will cost millions of dollars.
Oh, so, so we're going to...
And that, that's not your concern, that's something that was brought up years ago, and Eileen was our engineer. And so they're trying to smooth it over, but I will give you an answer tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Because, you know, they're doing work up the street.
Yes, ma'am.
But, uh, we were just concerned, some of the neighbors, if they're ever going to get to that part.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay?
Yes, I agree.
Thank you very much for listening.
Good evening. My name, my name is Pastor Tony A. Wilber, and I live in Yade for over forty years. Now, I would say this because it concerns me. Uh, some years ago, I applied for, uh, to be a borough manager, and I was interviewed by everyone in council, not you guys, but this young lady over here. And I never found out, I didn't get the job until like, three months later, if they hired somebody else, and I was told the job be mine. Now, I'll just ask this two questions, three. Who's in charge of this, the borough manager or the mayor?
In charge of what?
Borough, the borough.
This council is in charge of the borough.
Okay. Okay, that's what I'm saying, okay, I'm gonna tell you why I said it, when I applied for borough manager, the mayor was supposed to be the person in charge, okay?
The mayor's never, the mayor's never in charge of the council.
So what, you see, I'm sitting here, I'm not in charge of nothing here. Okay, well, listen, again, I'm telling you what happened when I was came to meet, uh, uh, borough manager.
What's your name, I'm sorry, what's your name again?
I'm Pastor Tony A. Wilber, from, uh, Yade, forty years of being living in Yade.
It's been a long time.
W I L B U R N.
And when did this happen?
Uh, probably fifteen years ago.
Fifteen years ago.
Yeah, that's why I stopped from the meeting, because I'm gonna tell you another reason, okay?
Yeah, you're here tonight.
I'm here tonight because I wanted to see what else was going on, okay? Because, I'm gonna tell you, the chaos I seen up there.
That's the shit.
I don't care what it was, and you as the council president?
Yes, sir.
As a president, I was, for Keystone Foods for thirty years, it would have never happened. It would never happen. I would never be respected by the folks up there, okay? Because truth of matter, I'll listen, I'll just tell you from my point of view, okay? I would have a meeting with all of them and asked them, and never, not ask, I tell, don't ever let that happen again. Because if you can't be respected by the folks up there, how you expect us to be respected? How you expect me to get along or want to be in a meeting like this? I came to that because I heard there's gonna be a meeting and whatever happened, and, uh, I, I, I just felt the feeling.
I wish you, I wish you had come last month.
I wish I would have came too.
Guess what else, I wish you had come, but you, but you, you can have an opportunity to see those meetings from January to today. And you, and, and I would love for you to give me a commentary on the behavior, not only of people here, but the behavior of people that were, that were, that were, what, what is the term, terminology, that were staged out there. Okay, for direct disruption.
I was not saying...
So, so all I'm saying to you, since you addressed me, all I'm saying out here is that there's a decorum, there's a, there's a respect for this chamber that should always be...
Always.
Always being enforced.
We by example.
I would like to call out those members that's being disrespectful.
Well, I don't have a problem with that, you know, I mean, I'm like, shut it here. Let me say this to you, I watched it when you asked some people say hi, and yay, and nay, whatever happened. Two or three people say yay, two or three people say no, what do the other people think, nothing?
Well, let me tell you...
I understand, I understand, that makes sense to me.
If you've been in management...
I was in management thirty years.
For thirty years?
I said this to you, I said this to you? Yes, excuse me, sir. Let me say this, last thing, by God, okay? I say just like this, if you ain't hear what I'm here for, I'll be here if you're gone.
You see, we still sitting here, right?
We need you here, we need you here.
We simply, we simply, we simply want people to respect the chair. This has nothing to do with personality, just respect the chair, and we can get things done in Yade. Thank you.
It's a germ.
Thank you.
I apologize, but your version was not very clear before, and I want to make sure I get a chance to take it, there are some more speakers as well. Uh, I have a couple of questions. Uh, and my questions, and good questions for the mayor, we were promised during the meeting that you would have an opportunity in the meeting to answer my questions, and I thought that was a good idea, and it's on the news, so I would like for the mayor to come back up on the stage.
Good morning.
Thank you. Okay, I have a couple of questions, I will be asking all my questions even if you cut off my time, so I would appreciate...
Oh, you're fine, you're fine, you're fine.
Where, last one of all, okay.
But let me, let me just, let me just clarify. Any questions that has to do with your specific, uh, request with regards to the obligation to have, you know, cell phone rights and whatever, that's fine. What we, what is not permitted here tonight is any reference to, uh, things that are not true. And when the mayor, the mayor has a tendency to out, to advocate for things that are not true. And it is the responsibility of this council to make sure that the residents of this borough, especially when there's been video and report, that the propagandizing that has to do with, uh, uh, someone's personal opinion will not be allowed in this chamber. Now, they can do it outside, they can pass out flyers, they can do whatever they want. But in this chamber, there has to be a hearted respect for what is true, for what is right, for what is integrity, it has a right to be done here. And we have tolerated for several months now, the, the, the total propagandizing and allegations against this leadership.
Council President, just to be here, and I guess this won't count for my three minutes, um, are you...
No, it doesn't count for your three minutes.
Thanks, ma'am.
I'm simply giving clarification.
Okay, okay, just, just so I understand, are you talking about the people who have come out in protest about Tom Marche, or are you talking about other things?
Not at all.
Okay, you're talking about other things, okay.
Good talk, good talk.
If it's all right with you, just because I want to respect everyone's time, I just have some questions I'd like to ask on the record. Um, okay, so, and I'm gonna go through all of them, so I hope you won't cut me off, uh, because we waited for a few hours here. Um, so, and mayor, if you could use three as possible, I'd appreciate it, could you just quick, just a couple of sentences, say more about the DOJ contact that you made, uh, whether it was written contact, if you use the...
Sure.
Thank you.
I contacted the, um, I had some missteps, some writers didn't speak to, that's why it took a little bit, but I, uh, within the last couple days, I've been speaking.
Could you stop speaking, if you may?
Sure. The United States Attorney for the Eastern District of Pennsylvania.
Okay, and can you do it in writing?
Yes, and her name is Jacqueline Romero.
Okay, thank you, I will talk to you afterward about maybe getting a copy of what you wrote, if that's possible.
Sure.
Moving on to my other questions, a bunch of the council isn't here anymore, but other council members here remain. Do you support a DOJ investigation to make sure that we do everything we can to prevent this from happening again, yes or no?
Absolutely.
No, that's the thing, I asked you on the record, so I apologize.
Oh, it's all right, mayor.
Absolutely.
We did, I just put it on the record, I trust you.
It's all her record.
Absolutely.
Next question, next question. Um, should I look at the officials that personally reviewed the evidence, including the video, um, that, that I understand Mr. Box says reviewed? Have any of you actually watched it?
We have not, we haven't yet, I have.
Okay, and Mr. Box, to your knowledge, do any elected officials have knowledge of the video, or did you watch it on your behalf?
The only knowledge that I believe the counselors have is what I explained to them in executive session, and they were provided with the updated incident report at the time of that executive session.
Okay, and, um, I appreciate that, um, in your professional experience, is it pretty typical for you to just, you know, review the evidence and give them a report? Or typically do elected officials show interest in reviewing evidence themselves?
Okay, I can answer that.
I have one question, uh, see...
Yeah, and I can answer that, the, uh, it's in the purview of the police chief and or the mayor to release that information. And it is my position that anyone wants to review the tapes and the evidence are welcome to do so.
Of elected officials?
Including, including, I, I, I said that in the, and, and I provided that opportunity also for the family.
Okay, my questions, then they are...
Well, you, you're...
Because the family said so, he did not provide it, so we're saying...
I provided that opportunity to the family, and I'm telling you, that might be, well, you haven't been talking to me, and, and you've been resisting me, and you've been...
But haters.
Show me off, okay, you're not working.
The mayor's saying to you that anyone who wants, whoever wants to review the evidence that we have are welcome to do so. I would like to state for the record, I would like to state for the record that the mayor nor did the lieutenant call any council member for us to be notified for, I believe it was three days after this happened.
Can I finish my questions without the other, I don't have my questions, um, so, so just to recap, uh, Mr. Box reviewed what evidence is available, which I assume was given to the district attorney's DOJ office, and he gave a report to all of you. Did any of you request to see the evidence, or have you, did you not ask that?
No one's requested for me to see the evidence.
I don't have a report, I don't have to see it.
So, so, there's both ways to, no one's asked me for, to see the evidence either.
Um, I would strongly encourage, uh, in order to get a stronger picture of whether DOJ needs to be involved, specifically it will be unanimous decision that everyone review the evidence, I totally trust in Mr. Box's review of the evidence, but I just think that it would have a more human connection to how serious the situation is.
I agree with you.
Okay. Mr. Box, um, did you prepare your memo, uh, for a council and the mayor describing the incident in preparation for litigation, or do Yade Police Reform, or both?
The only thing that I've done so far was, in writing, I believe, was letting council know that we had an incident report. It was presented in executive session, and there was a subsequent email, while everyone got a personal copy of that. I have not written a memo about, um, no, we did, we did. And that was, that was simply a factual recitation of the video, but I think that's all, that was in one of the emails, I think it was the first one, I have to go back and check. I think it was the first one without the incident reporting.
And I was just typically used this listener as a, where you're saying, hey, this thing happened, here's what we know to be true, and it just looks like...
Absolutely, that's the least only thing that has, that has come through.
Manager hasn't been, excuse me, the manager has not been allowed to tour the police department nor, nor, nor see the evidence.
And Ms. Kenny, I just want to state for the record, since you asked the question, I was barred from that, from that executive meeting, discussing the, uh, the, uh, the death of, of, of Mr. Marche. I was not allowed to go to the meeting.
We did not, we did not bar you.
Yeah, you did, I was not allowed to go to the meeting, just like that, just like that.
Meeting amongst council, so, you know, it's okay.
But it's about my department, it's about my...
Are you reporter, Ms. Kennedy? Are you reporter?
She does feel this way.
Go ahead, go ahead, you're asking very good questions, you're asking excellent questions.
I have one more question to Mr. Box, and everybody else wants to go, but these are questions for Mr. Box. So I, I suspect that tomorrow, if you were planning to send me a written response, you're probably gonna ask for a thirty day extension, assuming, uh, that's totally fine. But I just was wondering if you'd be willing to talk to me and Mary O quickly after the meeting, or in general, about what some of you might be able to, like, release in the meantime?
So, Lieutenant Burns and I are, like, are working to get you something that you, because I believe in your request, you said that you were okay coming in to view it.
Yeah, I would love to save on cost if that's possible, I would go out on a limb, so...
Um, I would anticipate, we would probably have that available probably early next week.
Okay, that sounds great.
What are you referring to, Mr. Box?
I filed a written request, and I think I would share with anyone who wants to look at what I requested, um...
I would like to see that, as a mayor, I'd like to see that.
Sure, um, and then, um, just generally speaking, um, I just was curious what the plan is, just overall, over this incident, to release documents relating to it, um, including whatever was shared with the DA's office, like, just to the public. Is there any plan to say, okay, we're done discussing this in executive session, let's release these documents so people have a full understanding of what happened?
Let me say something, to my understanding, I believe we are, uh, doing an independent investigation, but that's what I thought.
There's a proficiency study of the police department. It's a hundred and twenty day review of policy, procedure, um, data, information, everything that relates to the operation of the police department.
But, Madam Council President, do you and Mr. Box commit to not do what Cheryl did, which is to spend a bunch of taxpayer money on a report, and that's the report, and I'm deducting five percent of it?
Well, no, we're not deducting, as far as I'm concerned, as far as I know, it's, it would be a public document.
And then, um, the final question I have, I need to know this respect for the situation, um, but, but, so just to confirm my understanding, is there, is there any, are there, are there any other law enforcement officers of the Yade Borough that, at any time, had custody of Mr. Marche, other than Lieutenant Burns?
Oh, there's Lieutenant Burns?
We couldn't know that.
By their statement, it's, it's a written report, it's just unclear who was in, who...
The arresting officer, Mr. Burns could answer that question for a while, if Mr. Burns...
And I'm on turf, we didn't hear your, I'm surprised you didn't hear anything.
There were two officers, uh, Lieutenant Burns, I mean...
Yeah, there was a pretty good squad working in there, um, many of them were actually arrested, uh, there were two, and then Sergeant showed up, let's see, maybe brought back here. Uh, I don't know if all three came back initially. Uh, I don't know if all three came back initially, uh, but one of them had a late for call, and they were still in the squad.
Thank you for answering that, and and I think I can get to this, but by understanding that it's that all three are still on duty at this time.
That's right.
Okay, because as as I talked to the district attorney's office, and as well stated, they they think this is an accident, and they don't think anything could have been done to prevent this.
That's right.
Okay, I disagree about that, but that's that's quite all right, and I just wanted to get that all on the record, um, I guess, um, let's see if there's anything else here. Um, I would just encourage, I I know that like I'm not gonna get anyone to do this, and the people who probably been here aren't here, but like, it would be great if we could finish the meetings. And it would also be really, really awesome if we could get, like, the most critical information on the website. I just want to reiterate my offer for before, which is if you need a volunteer to help, potentially invite someone to hire, I'd be happy to get the best part of the information on the website, thank you. Mary, you're still.
Before you go.
We're very happy to speak, though, just make sure, please, don't.
What's critical is that someone was arrested, they were put in a holding cell. There is a monitor that is supposed to be watched, and we're trying to figure out, are the police supposed to notify the the turnkey that someone is in the cell? Or is she just supposed to know that someone is in the cell?
You can have no message.
Then, you know, questions need to be answered, and we would like for those questions to be answered.
And I hope, I hope the DOJ DOJ thing happens, and I hope that you all are united together, no matter what your opinions, because you all had mental health training for these officers, and so they were trained, and either whether they didn't follow the training, or the training isn't sufficient, uh, he died, and and clearly, just doing more of that training is not gonna fix the problem.
Thank you.
Madam, it's to me again, respectfully, um, yes, uh, representing, uh, Delta Resilience, and, uh, you know, as a former elected official myself. All all I think I can add to this, I appreciate, um, you know, the the forthcoming answers to the serious questions that have been raised, and I hope, you know, the the seemingly unanimous, and I didn't I didn't see a lot of unanimous things tonight, but, you know, I'm hoping that, yes, this does rise above, you know, uh, the the, you know, down dirty politics, because life and death is involved, and I appreciate the unanimity in, you know, seeking outside help and getting to the bottom of, uh, this situation, and I think, you know, having a neutral arbiter is the best for both, you know, the borough and or constituents, and hopefully, at least on this issue, that cooperation continues, so I hope, I hope.
Thank you for coming.